We'll encourage you to explore the entirety of this expanded park. And a new walkway to the north will ensure access to the existing bocce ball courts and the future proposed tennis and basketball courts. Giving our citizens the quality of life they deserve has always been our top priority, and we hope these improvements continue to give you the opportunity to live your best life, right here in the premier place to live, work, and play.
If you're looking into a trade, this right here, this is the king of all trades. We lay pipe, we fix water lines, we operate heavy equipment, we drive heavy machinery, masonry work, concrete work, asphalt work, we do it all. This right here is the king of blue collar work. A water distribution maintenance technician, we maintain the water system. We provide a very vital source being watered to all of our customers and residents in Manatee County.
If you enjoy getting dirty, if you enjoy working hard, if you enjoy fixing things and repairing things and maintaining things, this is a great job for somebody who needs to stay busy.
When you pull up on the job and there's water down the street, there's road missing, the bigger and better the job, the more I want it. The big line breaks, there's nothing that beats it.
This job takes grit, it takes determination, and it takes a wanting, a desire to work hard.
You can't be afraid to get dirty. You've got to be ready for it, you've got to welcome it, and it's something that we don't just mind. We look forward to it.
Hi, my name is Kyle with Manatee County Utilities. Come work with me as a water maintenance technician, and get ready to get dirty.
As a homeowner, you know the hassle of getting work done on your home and having to be present for an inspection that may end up happening a few days after the work is complete. That's why Manatee County Development Services is pleased to introduce ViewSpecs, a tool that provides virtual inspection services to contractors remotely with the use of a smartphone or tablet. With ViewSpecs, you can now have your inspection done live on the same day the job is complete. As a homeowner, this will save you from taking additional time off of work and the inconvenience of having to coordinate schedules between contractors and inspectors. Request that your contractor use ViewSpecs and save time and money on your next home improvement project.
All right, good morning. We're going to go ahead and call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for September 14, 2023 to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Yep. That would be a good idea. If you could, please silence your cell phones. We're going to go ahead and jump into this. We have a lot of, a lot of stuff on the agenda today, so with that, Ms. Leidar, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Update memo dated September 12, 2023, advertised public hearing presentation schedule, item number five, time certain, LDCT 2308, ordinance 2367, county initiated land development code text amendment, wetland protection, and this case is going to be continued to note date set and to be re-advertised.
Okay.
The revised motion is going to be, I move to continue the public hearing for LDCT 2308, ordinance 2367, to note date set and to be re-advertised.
Very good.
Item number six, PDR 2309P, Creekside Village on the Creek LLC owner, is a neighborhood workshop summary and public comments. Item number seven, ordinance 2371, formerly known as 2335, Tara DRI number 11, is public comments attached. Item number A, PDR PDC, PDMU 9303, ZGR 13, Tara Amendment, General Development Plan, revised charts and seatback table, and public comment attached. Item number nine, CL 2207, BTC redevelopment, Bayside Holding LLC, public comments. Item number 11, PDR 2226, CG Lacy C Ranch, Lacy C Ranch Holding LLP, public comments. And there is another update memo dated September 13, 2023, advertised public hearings, presentation scheduled. Item number six, PDR 2309P, Creekside Village on the Creek, public comments. Item number seven, ordinance 2371, formerly known as 2335, Tara DRI number 11, public comments. Item number A, PDC, PDR PDC, PDMU 9603, CGR 13, Tara Amendment, General Development Plan, public comments. Item number 10, PA 22-16, ordinance 2372, formerly known as 22105, Lacy C Ranch Large Scale Comprehensive Plan and Text Amendment, and is revised first page of staff report to reflect correct board of county commissioner hearing dates. Item number 11, PDR 2226, CG Lacy C Ranch, Lacy C Holdings LLP, add stipulation 8.6 and revise alternative motion for approval. And item number 12, PDI 2312, CG Titan Florida Reson Tarmac America LLC, additional information added to the staff report regarding history and adding attached site description, and I'm going to enter the GDP right now for the records.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Schenck, are there any changes from the county attorney's office or any words?
No changes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have an item that's time certain, so we're going to go ahead and open that item up and read it into the record. Who's handling that? Ms. Leidar, can you read it into the record? Thank you.
Item number five. LDCT 2308, ordinance 2367, county initiated land development code text amendment, wetland protection is a legislative case and to be continued to note date set and re-advertised.
Okay, very good. So item number five is going to be continued and it'll be re-advertised, so with that, I still have to open it up for public comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. With that, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on item number five? Is there anyone who wishes to come forward? All right, I'm going to close public comment on item number five, and we'll open it up for consideration. I need a motion, so if you would, we have a motion by Mr. Smock, a second by Mr. Delezline. If you would, please go ahead and vote. All right, with that, the, the motion passes 6-0 with Mr. Roth being absent. All right, I'm going to go to the next item. The next item is actually minutes for the July 13 and August 10, 2023 meetings. If you had a chance to read the minutes, are there any changes? If not, the chair will consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? I don't see any. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bedford and a second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Delezline. If you would, please go ahead and vote.
Is that present for the July meeting? Is that abstained for that then?
I don't think it is.
No, it's only a procedural motion. It's only a procedural motion. It is, in my view, there or not.
Okay.
Just proving the minutes is reasonably accurate.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, if you would, go ahead and vote, please. All right, with that, the motion passes 6-0, again with Mr. Roth being absent. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our first item, which is quasi-judicial. Sorry, is six our first item?
We have to go back to one.
Have to go back to one.
Presentation upon request, numbers one through four.
Okay.
Number one is being continued, but you have to open it up.
All right, let me. I had the wrong sheet there, I apologize. All right, so item number one. Item number one is again a legislative matter, so there's no swearing in. So if you would, Ms. Leidar, please read item number one into the record.
Item number one, LDCT 2301, ordinance 2304, county initiated land development code text amendment subdivisions, and is a legislative case to be continued to October 12, 2023.
Very good. We have item number one, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on item number one, which is being continued? Anybody at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close public comment on item number one, and the chair will consider a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Delezline, a second by Ms. Kevah. If you would, please vote. All right, again, the, the motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. We're going to go on to item number two. Again, this is a presentation upon request, so Ms. Leidar, can you please read item number two into the record?
Item number two, LDCT 2314, ordinance 23108, county initiated land development code text amendment, fence hold harmless agreement, and is Mr. Dan Greenberg, the case planner, amendment to the land development code but modify fence requirements on chapter five, standard for accessory and specific use and structures, section 5, 11.6.8.1, by removing the requirement for a whole harmless agreement.
Very good. And Mr. O'Shea, are you?
Mr. Chair, did you want a brief presentation or overview on this?
No, what I would like is a, just a very short summary.
Okay, I'm going to let Dan do that while he's coming up. I'd like to introduce Mr. Dan Greenberg. He is a senior planner that started with us in late May or early June, so this is his first presentation.
Very good, and welcome to the, to the show.
Thank you.
If you would, just a very brief introduction. Generally, when we have presentations upon request, we'll make a brief introduction, open it up for discussion, or I'm sorry, comment, and if things come out of that, then we'll get a little bit deeper into it. So just very briefly, two sentences, a summary of what, what's being asked of us.
Understood, thank you. Dan Greenberg, good morning, senior planner with Development Services and Comprehensive Planning Division. Application PLN 2307-0201 relates to section 5, 11.6, fences and walls, specifically requires a hold harmless agreement to be submitted to the county when desiring to locate a fence or wall to pass through or along a utility easement or drainage easement. Attempting to give you the two sentences, I'm going to skip through a lot of this.
Yes, now please.
Happy to answer questions, of course, but essentially easements in their recorded language already cover that. So there's really, with the fact that this, the county does not require often a typical home permit before you put a fence up, this seems to be a disconnected action that we would require, be required to hold something in perpetuity, you know, changes in ownership, things like that can cause problems. And essentially, we didn't believe it was necessary because the easement's already there.
Okay, very good. So in summary, the easement serves as granting the county rights to do whatever's necessary with regard to a fence?
Correct. The county or any other appropriate agencies could already access it.
Private, private utilities or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, any questions for staff? All right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and open up item number two for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close public comment, and the chair will open it up for questions or if there's any desire to discuss or a motion. So if you would, we have a motion by Mr. Smock, a second by Mr. Bedford. If you would, please vote. All right, motion, I mean, item number two passes approved with a 6-0 vote. So we're going to move on to item number three. Again, item number three is a presentation upon request, but this particular application is a quasi-judicial. So that's the first opportunity we've had where anybody providing testimony needs to be sworn in, so if you intend to speak on any item later in the hearing that's quasi-judicial, if you don't know if it's quasi-judicial, it would probably be pertinent to stand up and be sworn in. Otherwise, you're going to have to do it before you get to speak. So if you intend to speak today, please, please stand to be sworn.
If you even think you might be moved remotely to get up and speak today, stand up and get sworn in.
Everybody stand up. All right. All right, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item number three. Ms. Leidar, can you please read item number three into the record?
Item number three, PDR 2304 CP, the legacy project, Soho Missions owner, and is a quasi-judicial case, and the case manager is Mr. Chris Kleppert, and is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County regarding land development, amending the official sunning atlas ordinance 1517, providing for a rezon of more or less 0.78 acres generally located between 16th Street Court East and 17th Street East along the north ice of 32nd Avenue East and commonly known as 3124 16th Street East Bradenton, from RSF 6 Residential Single Family 6 to PDR Plan Development Residential Sunning District, and approving a preliminary site plan.
I think your mic died.
Approving a preliminary site plan for 11,890 square foot public community use subject to stipulations as conditions of approval setting for findings and providing a legal description and provided severity and an effective date.
Very good, thank you. And with that, if you could, just a very brief introduction, we'll open it up to public comment and see if there's anything that specifically needs to be addressed. So if you would, please make an introduction.
All right, good morning, Chris Kleppert, Development Services, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
So as Rosina had said, this is a rezon of approximately 0.78 acres from RSF 6 Residential Single Family 6 to Plan Development Residential, and this is with a preliminary site plan for roughly 11,890 square foot public community use. There's currently an existing 2,300 square foot public community use on the site. This is within the urban service area, so they're, they're looking to come in and expand and, and just expand their currently existing use. You say, well, what is a public community use? These are nonprofit organizations that provide a service to the community or to a specific group of individuals within the community.
Mr. Chair, if anyone has questions, the applicant's supposed to address this quasi-judicial.
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than have stare.
Understood. All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Apologize, I should have had the applicant make the presentation, not staff. So is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'd like to ask the applicant if they have a desire to make any statement regarding the application. I don't know who the applicant is. Do you wish to make a statement or are you waving it off? Not necessary? Okay, all right, we've had public comment, we've had a brief introduction by staff, so with that.
Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
I noticed that there's no stipulation that the architecture will not substantially deviate from what was submitted as part of the presentation. Usually, we include that. I don't see a stip for that.
Is, I, I don't know who would be the, the appropriate person to do, I don't recall.
I think the applicant, I don't know if they've got binding elevations or not.
Well, that's why I'm wondering.
I think the applicant has to address that.
So Ms. Schenck, is it?
I didn't hear the question.
The question was, Mr. Bedford said he didn't see any architectural, any reference to architectural standards being consistent.
Normally, when we rezon something to a PDR and we're shown elevations, whether it's an apartment building or something like that, we'll put a stipulation in that says the final product will not substantially deviate from those drawings shown, including in the GDP because they're with, they're with the, with the application.
I don't recall, yeah, I don't recall recently where we've required a binding nature on the architectural components. Is that something that?
So you have no idea what the building's going to look like?
Right.
Well, Mr. Chair, you really have to have the applicant address this. This is his project, it's quasi-judicial, staff can't, we can't be answered. I don't know if they have elevations.
No, my question to you is, can the county require?
Yes, they can voluntarily proffer that as a stipulation.
Well, that's not.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. It's up to the applicant.
Voluntary proffering is not a requirement. I'm asking, can the county require elevation?
All the stipulations have to be voluntarily proffered. All of them.
All right, thank you. So if I could, could we have the applicant step forward, please?
Mr. Chair, if it makes it simpler, I'm willing to support the project, but not if I don't know what it's going to look like.
Right. I, I think if the applicant makes a public statement with intent, does that satisfy your?
Good morning, and I've been sworn in. I'm Brian.
Name and county residence?
Brian Veeth, live in Manatee County.
Very good, thank you.
I'm Veeth Engineering, I'm the civil engineer.
Dan Draper, I was sworn in, architect.
Very good, thank you.
So your question is regarding the building, to make sure when we, if this approved, to go to final site plan, that we're, the architecture be consistent with the code, and is that your, and make sure we meet all the code and requirements?
No, you showed drawings. Is your building going to look like that when it's done?
Yes.
So it's not going to substantially deviate from these drawings?
No.
All right, then I'll, I'm okay with it today. I would suggest between now and the Board of County Commission that you add a stipulation that says the final product will not substantially deviate from what you've submitted.
Okay.
But we don't have to mess around with that wording today.
Okay.
For me.
Very good.
Is there any other questions?
Any other questions for the applicant?
Stay up.
Okay. Since you had an opportunity to speak, I'll ask you, is there, are, is there any closing comments or rebuttal?
We, we think this is a, a great project for the community and for the county, and we appreciate your support. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. All right, with that, we're going to close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion or consideration. We have a motion by Mr. Delezline, a second by Mr. Rutledge. Is there any, any discussion?
I hit the wrong button.
Oh, no, now we got to start all over. So, all right.
So anxious.
So.
Mr. Chairman, while they're doing that, I mean, I went on, I went online and did some research about this project and the, and the origination of the, of where it came from and the hilltop area of Tacoma, Washington is where the gentleman kind of came from. It's, it's just a mess. And his life story, if you haven't gone online and, and checked this program out, you should do that and see what they're doing over there.
Sozo missions, correct. Very good, thank you. All right, are we, all right, I'm going to go ahead and call the, the, a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye. Oppose, like sign. Chair votes aye. Chair votes aye, motion passes six oh. All right, we're gonna move on to item number four. So, item number four, again, is a quasi judicial application. Ms. Leidar, can you please read item number four into the record?
Item number four, C 2309 4920, Gene Davis Rezon, Edwards, Peyton Edwards and Brian Edwards owners. And it's a quasi judicial case and the case manager is Mr. Kevin Oldman. And it's a rezon of more or less 2.4 acres from A General Agriculture to the RSF 2 Residential Single Family 2 Sunning District. The site is located more or less 1,300 feet north of Gulf Coast Road on the east side of Gene Davis Road, commonly known as 4920 Gene Davis Road Parish.
Mr. Oldman, we're gonna change it up a little bit, since this is quasi judicial, the burden's on the applicant, so we're gonna have the applicant make a brief introduction, so. So, if we could, and if you could come forward, state your name that you've been sworn, your county of residence, and just a very brief introduction to what you're, what you're doing.
My name is Peyton Edwards, I was sworn in, I live in Mancy County.
Thank you, sir.
So, we're just looking to change 2.4 acres from agriculture use to RSF 2.
That's, that's efficient, so, all right. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just wanted to, do you have any idea what you intend to put there?
Just one more house than is there now, so just dividing the property in half and adding one house.
Thank you. It's not uncommon with the agricultural properties, I appreciate the explanation. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to step forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close public comment. Does the board need any additional information? Does the applicant wish to make any closing comments? Okay, waving that off. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing and we'll open it up for consideration. So, if you would, we have a motion by Mr. Bedford, a second by Mr. Rutledge. If you would, please vote. All right, with that, the motion passes six oh, so thank you very much. So, that, that concludes our presentations upon request. We're moving on to the advertised public hearing. Item number five has already been continued, so we're gonna move on to item number six. Ms. Leidar, can you please read it into the record?
Item number six, PDR 2309 P Creekside Village on the Creek LLC owner. And it's a quasi judicial case and the case manager is Ms. Chelsea Friedman. And is an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County regarding land development to approve a preliminary site plan for 198 multifamily residential units with at least 25% of the units designated as affordable housing on more or less 23.91 acres. The site is currently zoned PDR within the future land use category of RES 6 and partially located with the coastal planning area, the coastal evacuation area, and the coastal high hazard overlay district. The site is located in the north and south sides of 58th Avenue East, more or less 400 feet east of 33rd Street East Bradenton.
Very good, thank you. And who do we have for the applicant? Mr. Gauz, how are you doing?
Good, how are you doing, Mr. Chair?
Very good.
If we can pull up the PowerPoint, my name is Bob Gauz with Gauz and Associates. I represent the applicant who is with me here today. This is the Creekside Village Project. And I've got the ownership group, some of the ownership group. Desiree Doggett and Ishai Hasni is here, are here for the owners, as well as, I've also got Michael Yates from Palm Traffic, here is the traffic engineer, and Tim Najjar from Shored Power Engineering is here, and they're doing the civil work on this project.
Very good, and you've been sworn?
And I have been sworn, yes, sir, thank you. All right, this project, this is, as Rosina told you, the project is located off 58th Avenue East, down south of State Road 70, and it has Pierce Canal running through it. The property is currently zoned PDR, and I wanna make the point that this is not actually a zoning app, this isn't a zoning amendment, the property is already zoned PDR, but the PDR expired. So, we're here today requesting approval, approval of a preliminary site plan, a recommendation of approval of the preliminary site plan, but we're not asking for a zoning amendment. The property is RES 6, as you can see, surrounded by RES 6, and to the south of us is future land use of light industrial. The site is actually comprised of six separate parcels. And the overall density is 8.28 dwellings per acre. But because the fact that one of the parcels is in the coastal evacuation area, it's kind of a combination of figuring out the densities and allowable densities and gross density. So, I'm not gonna go through all that, but to tell you that the overall, the proposed density is 8.28. This is the design, north is up on this, and I'll tell you upfront that during this presentation, north is gonna shift to the right because it allowed me to make a bigger presentation on the, on the screen. But it's 100, we're requesting 198 dwelling units. This is a mixture of two and three-story buildings proposed. As Ms. Leidar pointed out, we're providing up 50 units of them as workforce housing, and we've been approved for the affordable housing designation. We're requesting two specific approvals. One is because this is 198 dwelling units with one means of access essentially off of 58th Avenue, and I'll talk about that. And the other is not required to have a fence, the Land Development Code says when you allow three-story buildings in a project, you have to put a six-foot fence adjoining a single-family residential. And I'll explain why we've asked for that specific approval as well. Now, the first, now, here's where north just shifted to the right, so I just say that because I don't wanna confuse everybody. We met, when we started this project, one of the things that's unique about this project is it's six parcels. There's three parcels north of 58th Avenue, and there's three parcels south of 58th Avenue. So, technically, it could be developed as two separate projects, each with 99 units, and it would be in full compliance with the Land Development Code. We worked with staff, said it would make more sense to process this as one consolidated development. And we talked to Frank Miola, the Southern Manatee, and said, Frank, just, you know, make sure that you don't have a problem with this. And he was fine with it, we talked with staff, and they also got the emergency operations center involved. And at the end of it, we all agreed that this project would be okay in the way we're proposing to do it. And we also provided various access points to the project so that if you had an emergency vehicle come down and there was a blockage in one area, we'd have other ways to get in and, and around the project. We exceed, as you can see with all that green, we exceed the required open space. And actually, what's not shown very well in this rendering is the fact that to the south of this, or to the east of that blue line, which is Pierce Drain, is also part of the project that we're really leaving untouched. The other specific approval request was talking about, you know, the required fences. And it's a couple of things, you know, we have, we've exceeded the setbacks, the required front yard setbacks are 25, the sides are eight, the rear 15. We've kept our buildings further than that. But more importantly, we have used, we have kept the three-story buildings further back. Those are the three, there's two three-story buildings. One of them is 80 feet away from the property line, and the other one is over 100 feet from the property line. The two-story buildings on the east, and why we requested not to have to put a six-foot fence at the east is because that two-story building is 280 feet from the property line, and it's buffered from the property to the east, the Garden Lakes property, by, by wooded area. So, we don't think that you're gonna be able to see the building if you're in Garden Lakes anyway. And so, and there's already a six-foot chain link fence with the barbs on top going along that property line. If you look at the way we've designed it, and we've tried to take, we've really tried to look at this, how, how to best do this and how to do this with a site, because we got some mature trees. So, we've oriented the buildings, by and large, you'll see the skinny ends of the buildings towards the property owners, the offsite properties. We, you know, placed them longitudinally so that they're inward facing. We've added lakes, we're trying to preserve trees where we can. You know, we've tried to, tried to approach it from a, from a way of creating more open space, not less open space. Now, there was one thing, and I need to bring this up because honestly, it's my fault. I didn't catch the stipulation until a couple of days ago. But the county staff is requesting a 35-foot drainage easement right there along the south property line. There's a ditch over there. I think it's partially on ours and partially on offside. But the county has asked for a 35-foot easement along there so they can maintain that ditch. And we're not objecting to that. But what that will have the impact, and we were proposing trailer parking over there in that, along that side because for anybody that's ever been multifamily, you always have this situation where people are trying to find a place to park trailers. And we decided to be proactive and provide that place that wasn't scattered throughout the parking lot. But what's gonna happen is we're probably gonna have to move that trailer parking in. You'll probably see it move a little bit to the north, so it'll be across from those one-story garage units that you see just on the west side of the lake. And again, north is to the right on this. So, I just wanted to let you know because we may be able to get that changed before we get to the county commission, but it, that would be a little different, I wanted to be, you know, address that with you guys. Now, we had a neighborhood meeting September 7th at the Christ Community Church, located right on the west side of our, our project. And a number of neighbors there, and there were a lot of comments made, kind of focused first on three that sort of were the ones that seemed like needed to be addressed first. There was some comments about flooding, people are concerned about flooding on Pierce Drain. Now, as you can see, this is actually, you know, an image that shows you where the 100-year floodplain is relative to our property. And this is again, is, when we designed this project, we tried to design it with an understanding of, you know, what's the best way to design it with the conditions that we're facing? And you can see that by and large, the buildings are not in the floodplain. We kept them out of the floodplain. Part of the requirement Manatee County has when you develop within Pierce Drain is it's gonna be a 50% reduction in offsite runoff, which means that we're actually gonna reduce runoff from the site. So, in a sense, this project goes forward, this should help with the flooding situation on Pierce Drain, not hurt the flooding. Another one that was concerned is about 58th Avenue East. And as part of your package, you have the traffic impact analysis that's been approved by staff. It's been submitted, it's been reviewed, it's been approved. The one criteria that they asked for in that is they want us to put a 240-foot right turn lane on 33rd into the, onto 58th. We will be improving 58th Avenue to county standards. And then they want a 290-foot left turn lane for the turn into 33rd. And actually, 33rd has a, has a center turn lane already, so probably will turn into restriping to, to make that 290-foot left turn lane. But it will be able to be done. We had some concerns about the locations of the buildings in the proximity of the property land, primarily in the north, kind of the northeast portion, and then the southwest corner. Now, as I said, the setbacks are 15-foot. We are proposing in the southwest corner that that building is a two-story building, which is sort of like, if you think about, well, how big is a two-story building? Well, think of a two-story house. And I know you, I know that everybody's seeing three- and four-story apartment projects going up everywhere, but what we're proposing along there is a two-story building. So, think in terms of a two-story house what that looks like. And, and on the north property land, we showed a 25-foot setback. And again, that's also a two-story building. And I kinda pointed this out because it came up, and I pointed out at the, at the neighborhood workshop. There's a reason why there's that big gap between those buildings, and it's because there were two 26-inch oak trees in there. And I can't guarantee that we're gonna be able to save them, but I know we won't save them if I don't even try to save them. And so, we left a gap to see if we can't work with the engineer. And as we get to the point where we start doing real drainage and grading, we can factor that in and try and save it. So, that's why that building gap, that gap in those buildings is there. And if you think about, well, what do we take out to the north when we did that? What was a 12-inch oak? And then the survey didn't identify any other trees, I think there's Brazilian pepper over there. But we made the decision that if we're gonna whack a 12-inch oak and save a 26-inch oak, that seemed to make a lot of sense to us. Because again, we're trying to save trees where we can save trees, and we recognize that from our standpoint, it sometimes reduces the cost of development, but more importantly, it enhances the appearance of the development and makes it a more appealing place for people to live. Now, there were other comments, people do not wanna lose the wooded area behind their homes. I get that. They do want us to remove the nuisance vegetation. They do want us to get rid of the junk that's accumulated over, on the property over the last decade or two. They don't like the random gunshots that apparently have come from the property. I haven't heard them, but obviously, I'm not, I don't live next to the property. There was concerns about people walking into Garden Lakes from the property. I will tell you, there's a six-foot chain link fence, and you can kinda see it in that picture on the bottom left. It's a six-foot chain link fence that runs along the Garden Lakes front edge of budding our property. And then, concern about Pierce Drain Management, maintenance, a concern that the county wasn't maintaining. Currently, Manatee County does not have an easement through our property. I don't know that that means they haven't been maintaining it, but as part of this project, we're gonna grant Manatee County an easement so they can go along it through our property and maintain Pierce Drain as well. So, at that point, Manatee County will have legal, the legal right to do that. And that's a picture looking north, sort of from the south end of the property. So, you can see, I'm pretty sure Manatee County's been doing maintenance on that Pierce Drain anyway. Garden Lakes said they want a sound wall along the east property line. We're not proposing to do that, we feel like you've got a pretty good buffer. This is a view of Garden Lakes from Pierce Drain across from our proposed two-story building. As you'll notice, you can't really see the homes on the other side of that buffer, and we don't think they're really gonna see us, and we don't think that it's gonna prove to be a significant problem. There was comments they wanted us to have an onsite manager. And the truth is, this will have an onsite manager. And anybody who knows apartment projects knows that management of the project is the key to having the project be successful, and this project will have onsite management. There was concern about the bridge, and I'll be honest with you, I went back out there and looked at the bridge. That's actually a steel bridge. So, we're gonna have to look at that and see if it can just be rehabbed. Probably the decking needs to be done and some rails need to be added. But we're not really proposing to do anything on the other side of Pierce Drain, but we would wanna be able to get lawn equipment to get over there to maintenance, you know, a small vehicle to get over there to maintenance and stuff, because we do have a potential workshop, the, one of the existing buildings, we may convert that into workshop for the maintenance staff to be able to work in. But it's, it's not as bad a bridge as you might think. And I have actually driven across that bridge. I did it this day because there was a little erosion right next to the corner of it that needs to be repaired. So, bottom line is, you know, if you review the staff report, we're consistent with the comprehensive plan. We're consistent with the Land Development Code. Transportation analysis has been done, reviewed, approved. We're gonna be increasing housing for, you know, affordable housing, you know, with the, with this approval. As you can see, we've got a significant amount of green space on this project. This one actually shows kind of more of the whole project area, and you can see how much green space we've left. It is infill development, and that's always the hardest because of the fact that, well, you have neighbors, and they come out and they don't like losing the open space behind their homes, I get that. Staff's recommended stipulations, we've agreed to all those. And we're asking respectfully that you recommend approval of our project, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you. Can you bring the, okay, the graphic is up. Can you explain where the trailer parking was?
Okay, north is to the right on that screen. On the south side, which is to the left, to the left, the left side. I wish I could put my finger on it and show it to you, but.
There's a cursor on the screen, I don't know who's.
Is there, that I can move?
Yeah, I saw it going across here.
Yep.
Is it, is it north of the pond? Oh, along the property boundary, okay, all right, all right.
So, let me go back a few. Okay, I've got it called out there, the 35-foot drainage easement. That was gonna be trailer parking. If you look, you can see those parking spaces are deeper and wider than you normally would do for a vehicular parking. We have a parking ratio of 1.9 spaces per unit. So, we're over the county requirement of 1.8. We have parking that we can give up, which is across from those carport, those garages that you see just to the, to the right of that arrow, that we could turn those into deeper and wider spaces and, and address some trailer parking there. Our main goal with that was just give people a place to put it where it belongs, and you don't have a trailer just sitting around in your project. And it makes it easier on the management staff to, to handle that.
With regard to the drainage easement, is it measured from the property boundary?
Measured from the property boundary, yes, sir.
And the intent is to plant landscaping in it?
No, sir, because they won't allow us to plant landscaping in that. So, we'll end up with landscaping just outside that 35-foot easement.
Okay.
So, you can see, it starts to have an impact.
Yes, okay, all right. The other question is the Pierce Drain along the.
It's the blue line along the east side, which is at the bottom.
You showed three crossings of it?
We did. And we may, you know, the staff is requiring and stipulating that we have to do a no ride certificate.
Okay.
We may decide not to put those because we may just decide to rehab the bridge so we can get over there to maintenance, but we may not encourage people to walk over there as much.
Okay. Do you know that the existing bridge is not gonna have an impact, or hasn't had an impact on?
Well, the existing bridge has been there for plus 30 years. I mean, those houses that are on the other side, those buildings on the other side. I mean, those houses that are on the other side, those buildings on the other side, I can, I can go down to 1984, and I think I can go back to 1973, and I can see those houses over there. There was access over to it.
Eighty, eighty-four, the water management districts were established, so I think that's typically the timeline. And then the last question I have is, what's the purpose of the shell turnaround? Is that ex...
The shell turnaround down there before the bridge?
At, at the bottom left of the...
Oh, we were just trying to place, so we were thinking that you, in case you had, wanted to have more vehicular traffic across there. Originally, we thought we might have more vehicular traffic across there. And so we put a turnaround because the county likes to have a stabilized turnaround.
All right, okay, all right. That's all I had. Any other questions for the applicant?
I had a couple, if you don't mind, Bob.
Sure.
First of all, I, I like the plan on a couple of levels. Certainly, I like the, the access to housing, and I like the green space. I'm a big fan of when we can develop and do green space, that's great. I had a question about the turnaround, I mean, the, the turn lane that you're installing. It looks like you're going to share that with a tenant that's already out there on the road. Is that, is the turn lane going to go past somebody else's entrance to get into your entrance?
Are you talking about up there at the, on the west side along 33rd?
Yes, sir, that...
The church doesn't have an access point right on that road, no, sir.
Okay, you're not going to share that with them? That road, it's not really clear whether that parking gets to that access point out to 33rd from there.
It doesn't.
Okay, so you're not going to have what we have at State Route 70, where you've got people turning into a D-cell turn lane, confusing the traffic?
No, sir.
Okay. Paul, please. And then the quality of the trees that you're saving, I'm just curious, this is more of a question. The, the oaks that you're trying to save, have you vetted the quality of those oaks and their life, and what do you expect you're going to...
No, sir, I haven't gone through that process. I mean, there'll be a point where I'll go out and look at them. That would normally be as we get ready to go into the final site plan. So for purposes of this, I looked at the stand, from the standpoint of, I have two 26-inch trees. If they're laurel oaks, I probably won't make any effort to save them. But if they're live oaks...
Gotcha.
The goal is to see if we can save them. I've said this to many people, stormwater regulations and tree preservations are, they oppose each other because you have to bring infill, you have to stack dirt.
Yeah.
And so it's always hard to save trees. But it starts with identifying that you want to try and save a tree. And one of the things that if you look, this sort of shows it. If you look at where 58th comes down and has a, has a roundabout at the end of it, a cul-de-sac at the end of it, you'll notice it's all green from there all the way to Pierce Drain. There's a little swell that 58th drains on. Manatee County's going to want to be able to continue to drain. But because of that, we also have several large trees in that area, and we feel like we don't have to fill that area. We can save those trees so that when you come down 58th, hopefully, you'll see more of a park-like setting down there with some nice trees that we've preserved as opposed to what you probably have grown used to seeing, which is scorched earth and then plant new landscaping everywhere. So we're going to try and save them if we can.
Yeah, you know, we, we saved them up on 60 and 301 at the Chili's there, and I didn't think it would work. And now it's almost 10 years later, and they're doing well. So I, I argue that even though it's hard, sometimes they just, they want to be there, you know?
And we think it's worth the effort.
Yes, sir, thanks. And then the other question you had, you had 1.9 parking spaces, is that per unit?
Yes, sir.
And what is, do you know what the count would be if you went by bedroom?
No, sir, but typically apartment projects are a combination of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and some three. I think it's typically like 40% of one bedrooms, 40% two bedrooms, and maybe 20% three. But I don't know what the mix will be, but...
Okay, that's...
There'll be a combination of, and there, there may even be some studios in here.
Okay, all right, thanks very much.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
58th is a dead end.
Yes, sir.
Is that cul-de-sac going to be accessible to the public for the turnaround?
Yes, sir, we're going to have to dedicate some right-of-way for it to be fully in the right-of-way.
Each will be on the two sides?
Yes, sir.
58th will be curb and gutter?
Probably.
You'll need a pond somewhere through there?
Well, we're adding ponds in this project, so we'll just have to pick it up. And actually, we probably won't need a pond for 58th because it currently drains...
Towards Pierce Drain?
East, right towards Pierce Drain now, so that'll probably continue to do that.
The affordable housing, do you know if you're aimed at a percentage of AMI or a bracketing of that, or you don't really know at this point?
I don't know that we've made that decision yet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gauz, on the graphic that's on the screen, is the red representing existing right-of-way? On 58th? Is that the terminus of the existing right-of-way?
Well, the, the existing right-of-way essentially stops where the roundabout is, the cul-de-sac is, okay? As you head east.
Yeah. I presuming the red line indicates the property boundary, that parcel doesn't terminate until it's down past the tree.
You're right, the, the red line, this is probably a bad, I didn't get that one changed, but what you see with the green coloring on it, that's really the property.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, all right. With that, if there's no other questions for the applicant, we'll go ahead and go to staff presentation. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Chelsea Freeman. I'm a planner with Development Services, and I have been sworn. There were two additional public comments I've received last night and this morning. I will distribute them.
Thank you.
Before I start my presentation, I will provide a little bit of information. There was a question about the affordable housing units as it relates to AMI. Half of the units, so 25 units, will be reserved for pricing at 80% of AMI and below. And then half of the units, another 25 units, would be priced at 81% to 120% AMI. I will try to skip information to not be even redundant. The site location is on 58th Avenue East. As we understand, it takes exclusive access via 33rd Street East. It is comprised of six parcels totaling 23.91 acres. The property was approved for rezone in 2009 for PDR 0705-ZP. That was from A1 to PDR. That PSP had approved 99 dwelling units, which were a mix of attached and detached single-family units, and that PSP has since expired, thus coming back for a new PSP. The future land use category is residential six, which typically has a density of six dwelling units per acre. That standard density is what is being implemented on the parcel that is affected by the coastal evacuation area, denoted in the, the blue. It's the parcel to the northeast of the six parcels. Also, not applicable for the affordable housing bonus, so utilizing the standard density is the coastal high-hazard area, but that is limited to Pierce Drain itself, the green denotation. The portions which are eligible for the affordable housing bonus are those which are only in the coastal planning area, so the, the red marking by itself, or not within a coastal overlay district at all. So averaging those proportions out over the site, it produces an average allowable density of 12 dwelling units per acre gross, and then a maximum unit count theoretically of 238 units that could occur on the site at maximum density. The preliminary site plan is shown above. The, the standard is, of course, applicable to the northeast corner. The average, the gross density that has been proposed within the affordable housing area is 9.4 gross dwelling units per acre, which is below the previously cited 12 maximum, producing an average across the site of 8.28 dwelling units per acre and the 198 as proposed. The request includes the 25% of the units, 50 units to be affordable housing, a mixture of two and three-story buildings. So 150 of those dwelling units are either not located within a coastal overlay district or are only located within the coastal planning area where their affordable housing bonus applies. 48 units are located within the coastal evacuation area, that's Buildings B and C. Of note, there will be language in the Lura to restrict that the, the affordable housing units will not be able to be located within Buildings B and C. There are zero dwelling units proposed within Pierce Drain, within the coastal high-hazard area itself, right? The site access is proposed via 58th Avenue East. There's the primary access, the, the rotary access serves both the north and south halves of the project. And then the secondary access is served by two gated emergency accesses located west of the primary rotary access, also featured as improvements to 58th Avenue East and 33rd Street East. The site, preliminary site plan also includes a clubhouse with pool and two playgrounds, preserved forested area east of Pierce Drain, and then the one existed and the two previously discussed, proposed, but potentially proposed pedestrian bridges. There are two specific approval requests associated with this proposal. The first relates to access. The, the pieces of LDC 1001 dot 1 dot C dot 2 that are specifically need addressing in the specific approval are that while it is acceptable for a second means of access to be located on the same street as its primary, it would need to typically be on a public bidirectional thoroughfare, and this is not considered a public thoroughfare. It also requires that the, if, if those secondary and the primary access are located on the same street, that they would be separated by 300 feet or more. This plan proposes 135 feet between the rotary and the northern emergency access, and 100, 275 feet between the rotary and the southern emergency access. I can clarify a bit on the second specific approval relating to building height and associated screening. The interpretation of 401 dot 5 dot A dot 2 is most specifically applied to RSF zoning, which is to, located to the north. So to, to the west and south is single-family properties, but it's not single-family zoning. And thus, fence has, fencing has been proposed there, but it's not required. It's being voluntarily proffered. The request most specifically is to change the requirement from a six-foot solid wall to a six-foot fence. The positive aspects of this project include the 50 affordable housing units, 25% of the total. The project exceeds the minimum required open space, proposing 66% open space, and the, the voluntarily proffered screening for A1 zoning despite not being required. Pardon me. The negative access, aspects of this project include that the access will be exclusively available through 58th Avenue East, and that portions of the project are located within the FEMA regulatory floodway and within the 100-year floodplain per Manatee County watershed models. The mitigating factors for those negative aspects are that four entrances, one rotary access serving to, one to the north and one to the south, and then the two gated primary accesses are provided on the, the sole access from 58th. And that the only structures proposed within the FEMA floodway are the existing and proposed pedestrian bridges. And the structures proposed within the 100-year floodplain include a small area, I measure about approximately 325 feet for Building D, approximately two-thirds of the proposed covered storage areas, and one of the two proposed playgrounds. And I did collect with the assistance of my colleagues some site photos, which might provide some perspective on the, the site conditions as I stand now. This is a view from the, the arrows, south from the eastern edge of the Community of Christ Church property, so west of the property, looking south. Here is a view from 56th Terrace East, from the street, looking through the neighbors' properties at the northern property line of the project, the tree line. Views from the south taken at the current terminus of 58th Avenue East, so from the inside of the project, so heading south. And submitted by the applicant, views from the existing pedestrian bridge, or I suppose the vehicular bridge to the south of the property, looking north, and then the, the bridge itself. In conclusion, with the given stipulations and requested specific approvals, staff finds the request to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and applicable requirements of the land development code. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Can you go to the slide that had request? I think it was about halfway through, not specific request, just request.
Yes.
Right there. What is, what, what's the intent? It says 48 dwelling units inside the coastal evacuation area, Buildings B and C, and zero dwelling units in the coastal high-hazard. And then I thought you said that there would be no affordable in which buildings?
In, in C and B. The, the affordable housing units will not be permitted to be located within Buildings C and B in the coastal evacuation area. They would only be permitted within the coastal planning area or areas outside of the coastal overlay districts entirely.
Okay. And the, so the 48 units are all market rate?
Standard, yes. And that will be in, in language in the Lura, which is forthcoming.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, sir. Thanks, thanks for the presentation. I had two questions. One is, is it the, is it our accepted standard to use bamboo as a planting material?
I am not the environmental reviewer, but I, I don't...
The, the reason I ask is, I've always been told that bamboo is a, a water-demanding product that permeates and kind of runs away. And so I'm curious whether we, as a, as a community board, say that that's what we accept or... Because I, I noticed Bob said he was going to put that in, and I'm just curious whether that's preferable, desirable? It just seems inconsistent with what I've heard.
That might be better for the applicant to answer that question.
Okay, I just, I wonder, I was asking about the code, so...
My, my understanding is that bamboo is not allowed, but environmental can confirm that to us.
Okay, it's, it's just a question. And then the other question, it says 66% open space was your statement, and theirs was lower than that. Do you think it's 66% open space or 50-something open in your estimate?
As reported, it was 66. I pulled that from the plans.
Good, I just, I was just curious whether there's a discrepancy in my memory or... And, and the last thing was on the fences. So the policy is to have a solid fence, and they want to maintain a chain link, is that correct?
It is to have a wall, a solid wall.
Okay.
And the request is to have a fence of the same height, solid.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford.
Will there be a Lura associated with this to guarantee the affordable housing units?
Yes, sir.
What will be the term of the apartments having to remain as affordable housing? Or that hasn't been negotiated yet?
I, I believe it has, I'm not familiar with...
We have a...
Please, Rowena.
I've seen them everywhere from a year to 99 years, so...
Good morning, for the record, I have not been sworn.
Oh, sorry. All right, if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on anything today, if you would, please rise to be sworn in. Thank you. You're not alone, so...
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
For the record, Rowena Young Gopee, Affordable Housing Development Coordinator with Development Services. Now, for the Lura on this parcel, because of the way the development is set up for 25% affordable at 50 units, and there's 25 units at 120% and 25 units at 81, it's going to be a little split, so we're looking at 20 years to 25 years for this one.
Okay, that's a good answer. You know, if it's bracketed in there, then great. If it, if I find out a year from now, it's three years?
No.
Okay, fine.
It will not be.
Manatee, the Lura, the shortest term is 20 years.
20 years, yes.
Fine, thank you.
And would they all be the same, just out of curiosity? That's an interesting question for me.
What do you mean all the same?
For the different price points of valuation, will the term be the same for all of them?
Well, for the 81 to 1, 20%, those will be 20 years. And then the 80% and below, because those 80% and below, they get additional incentives. Those would be about 25 years for the number of units.
Any additional questions related to the affordable units? Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
All right, with that, oh, staff, bamboo?
Yes, bamboo. Kara Hanning, Environmental Planning Section Manager. So since this project is PDR, the requirement truly is only one canopy tree per 30 linear feet, and the fence where the three-story buildings are proposed. If the applicant is proffering more in that sense, then we'd work with them at time of final site plan if the adjacent neighbors are interested in having more of a hedge. But that would be proposing more than what's required for the site.
And, and for the record, I don't think Mr. Gauz said bamboo. I think the, the comment we got said Mr. Gauz said bamboo, so...
That's right, I didn't...
So, Mr. Gauz, are you proposing bamboo?
Mr. Chair, during the neighborhood meeting, the residents that had proximity to, primarily to the southwest corner of that building, I suggested that one of the things we could do, since I'm also the landscape architect on the project, is in addition to the required tree every 30-foot, we could put in some bamboo. And bamboo comes, I, I get what you say, I had bamboo in a yard I used to own, and if it's, if it's... I had bamboo in a yard I used to own, and if it's, if it's runners, you can hardly control it. But you can also buy clump-forming bamboo, and I suggested that what we may choose to do is add some clump-forming bamboo, which will very quickly get up to 20 feet tall, which will add them an additional level of screening, although as, you know, bamboo also makes its own noise. But, I mean, I, I mentioned that too, but.
And does it use more water? Is it aggressive water, like Luka and some of these other?
I, I don't think that is particularly any more so than anything else that we may plant there. So, you know, oak trees like water, too. It's just, you know, I think bamboo probably will use less water to get established than the oak trees will. But, but I haven't found it to be particularly problematic.
And Mr. Chairman, bamboo, yeah, bamboo makes a great buffer for that, that southwest corner that you're talking about, so.
All right. Very good. Any additional questions for staff or the applicant before we open it up for public comment? All right. Hearing none. We're going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward to speak to this application? If you would, please step forward, state your name, that you've been sworn, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Jim Kime. I live at 5815 Garden Lakes Fern, which is 36th Street. One of my problems I have with this is a, a lot of our residents on Fern did not receive the first letter. Okay? We did not know about the, we had people from the other neighborhood, which is Garden Lakes Estates, actually tell us about it late. Another thing I find out is, right now, you've stated it's going to be two-story. Is it going to be three-story or two-story?
Sir?
Can you please direct your comments here?
Is this going to be a two-story or a three-story facility?
That was in the application. That was just presented. They had the building.
Well, we've had one that says two-story, and another one says three.
This is the presentation for approval. It doesn't matter what you've seen previous.
Why are they removing the wall for, versus the six-foot fence they're going to put in versus a wall?
Yeah.
Is it just cost-wise?
They don't, again, this isn't a dialogue back and forth. You make statements, ask your questions.
I'm just asking some simple questions here.
Yeah.
To, to this project. I mean, I have no problem with the project. I just, there's things that are going on here that I just don't understand what's, what's happening here.
Right.
Because all I've received was this in the mail. And that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay. All right. And again, for clarification, this is an opportunity to ask questions, but it's not a, it's not a dialogue back and forth. If there are something, items that need to be addressed, the applicant or staff will address them after the comments are made. So with that understanding, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Yes, if, if you could, state your name, that you've been sworn, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Ruth McConnell. I have been sworn, and I live directly behind the project in Manatee County at 5802 Fern. I carefully looked at everything on your website and reviewed all the filings. There are two points I'd like to bring up. One thing is, the, the proposal has included two foot bridges to cross Pierce Canal. And the natural area along Pierce Canal, which is directly behind us, has been a concern for our community and has been neglected by previous owners. And there's probably a lot of dangerous debris, there's a falling down house, a septic tank, a bunch of things back there. And we want to be sure that that can be cleaned up and maintained after this apartment complex gets put in place. So related to that, this footbridge, this access bridge to the maintenance building that is on the diagram, we are very concerned at what the capacity might be for that bridge, if it's going to handle pickup trucks, or in the worst-case scenario, if there is a fire in that wooded area, how will the fire department have access to get back there? Or how will that situation be controlled by the fire department? The other question that we have is the fence. Many of the people who live along Fern are concerned about privacy issues, especially in light of the fact of foot bridges and a nature walk being put back in there. Some of this might be alleviated by a solid fence. We don't know whether that would improve sound. Garden Lakes Community Association has had a chain link fence along there, but animals have dug under it. It doesn't encase our whole border line, so there are points at the south end and at the north end of Fern where people who want to wander or like to be in secluded areas where they could walk through the communities. And Garden Lakes Estates, which is separate from us, plus Garden Lakes Community Association, is a gated community. So the intent there is to have some security. And from an apartment complex, having access to crossover from 58th would be a new situation that we'd be concerned about security. So overall, I think the property will probably be improved by this project, but we would certainly want attention paid to our concerns.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? If you would, please step forward and.
Good morning. My name is Herb Hunter. I have been sworn, and I do live in Manatee County, 5719 Garden Lakes Fern. And I have left you some comments in writing, so I'll be very brief. Pierce Drain has for a long time been neglected and been an item that floods during heavy rains. It picks up water as far east from 33rd Street to 39th Street, where Lion's Head drains into the community I live in, Garden Lakes, and then drains into Pierce Creek. There are two lakes that drain in there from my subdivision. There is the one on 39th Street. And of course, there's going to be some drainage coming from this new development. I view this not as a problem necessarily with this development, but as a regional sense. I encourage you to take your time and look at the water drainage problem, because now you have a little bit of ability to help the problem. I draw your attention to Moss Creek, which was recently developed. And there we saw homes eliminated and a very large, very deep lake pond put in that's basically empty. And basically, it grabs water from a flooding Pierce Drain and holds it, and then dispenses it back to Pierce Drain as the water begins to drop in Pierce Drain, controlling flooding downstream, which would be to the north here. Right now, all the bodies of water that are flooding into Pierce Drain flood immediately. There's very little delay. And we, we need something in the way of civil design that can kind of help stretch the life of Pierce Drain a little bit, so that we don't have future flooding. And this gives us an opportunity to at least look at that. So I just encourage you to take a little more regional look at it as you approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody? Yes, if you would, please come forward, state your name, that you've been sworn, county residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Howa Tran. I have been sworn. I live at 5843 33rd Street East, which is one of the three properties of the southwest corner of the project. Had a meeting with Bob Goss last week. We attended that meeting. Unfortunately, my neighbor, Vinnie Manzari, was not able to attend this morning. He is working and couldn't get off, take the time off work to, to be here. Our concern, we, we have several concerns here. One of the main ones being the proximity of the two-story building, mainly to his structure. So we measured it out physically in the field. And his lanai or porch measures about 11 feet away from the property line. And as we've seen Mr. Goss say, that the new building is going to be set approximately 20 feet away from the property line, meaning it's only going to be about 31 feet. And 31 feet is not that far for two structures, especially a two-story apartment building to be from a residential home. So we're, you know, I, I don't know where we are in the design process and all that, and is it even possible? But one of our requests is to possibly move the structure, maybe even 10 feet, 15 feet, 20 feet, as much as possible, that'll allow the development to continue planning and designing what they need to do to satisfy the requirements. This building, this two-story structure, and I was, I submitted a public comment and then followed up with an email last night, and I got some diagrams in there. I want, I do want to say in respect to Mr. Goss is that the, the diagrams are not to scale. The, the, you know, the ones with the pictures and showing the proposed building, this is kind of what, you know, we depict is going to be there, just trying to picture a two-story building out on site. And so if you go through the, the photos there, you can see the proximity of the proposed building to my neighbor's house. And then also, I want to say on the second to last page and the last page is the view from my property, being in the, on the back porch and looking out towards this. And, and a two-story structure there will be basically looking straight into our pool cage area and into our family room. So basically, our privacy will be eliminated. Now, Mr. Goss has mentioned in, at the meeting and today, kind of discussed a little bit about the bamboo planting, which we are welcome to, and we would prefer, and we would like to memorialize that as a request. But then also, we object to the request to changing the fencing from the wall to a PVC fence. There is a, an existing, I think, I want to say it's an eight-foot PVC fence that has, you know, over the years, and it's, it doesn't traverse the entire property line, but it is along the property line between the development and my neighbor's property there. Some of that has fallen down over the years because of the windstorms. But that's what we would prefer to have, is if we can't have a wall, a six-foot wall, then have an eight-foot fence.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to come speak on this application? You have to come forward. Don't have to be called. And again, if you could, please state your name, your county of residence, that you've been sworn, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. I'm Gloria Urban. I've been sworn in. I am a Manatee County resident for 50 years.
Thank you.
And I am on the South Street right after this proposal. I'd like to say, if nobody has been out there to see the property, it is park-like, nature-preserve material. I know this has been already gone through. In regards to notifications, there were some yellow signs put up for information that these meetings were taking place. There was one on the south side of Briarwood, not on their main entrance. There were none at Oak Terrace, which is the north, the north boundary. And the, the other thing is the, the traffic. The traffic coming out of there, I know they're only saying it needs one road. In the future, if it does need another access, are they going to have to buy out one of the four properties that are facing 33rd Street? Some of the, the north and south presentation of this, because it was turned several times, is confusing for somebody reading maps or not good at reading maps. There would be a school bus stop, and where that's going to be is there's going to be a sidewalk there where the church is or at the existing house on the north corner. And there's, the, the school bus stop creates a lot of traffic, especially at those times of day when 33rd Street is not equipped to handle the traffic it's getting now. Many, many heavy-duty semis are using that. The insurance, I hope they have insurance, flood insurance, because my son's been through two floods in the same type of predicament. This creek, it's not a creek, it's a drain. It's Pierce Drain. And the gap, I believe the gap comes into that. And about five years ago, the south side of Pierce Drain was flooded because a community was built on Prospect, and they razed the, the whole area. And so the, the creeks actually overflowed into Center Lake Development, which had been there a long time. Every house was flooded. I hope you give this consideration. And also, I like the fact that they're going to have community children's areas for them to do something. I, I approve that people need places to live, and it does look good, but there needs to be some more attention, and the trees there are absolutely gorgeous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to come speak on this application? Anyone at all? All right. Seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. And Ms. Greer, would you be the person who might answer questions related to process and stormwater for areas like the Pierce Drain?
Yes, sir. And I was going to say that I can get with Public Works. I do know that they have been doing some studies on Pierce Drain and some maintenance. So I can get with them to see if there's anything in this general area. I do know they're looking at it as a whole. And then any, you know, any impacts that they make to the floodplain, they'll have to provide floodplain storage. I believe what the one gentleman was talking about at Moss Creek, where it's adjacent to the creek and it kind of inundates and then goes back out, that's probably a result of their floodplain compensation that they did. So this site would have to do a similar, if they're going to impact the floodplain, they would have to do a similar. And then when it does come in for any type of FSP construction plan, that would be something staff would be looking at, especially with trailer parking. I didn't want people to think that just because trailers are parking there, we don't consider the floodplain. I do think that they were considering putting that type of use on a paved surface, not just in a grassed area. But that would be something that we'll look at.
Very good. And for clarification, the process we're going through is entitlement. After this process, there's still, that's when the, the heavy lifting begins with the engineering analysis through stormwater and design and utility design, things like that, correct?
Correct.
So the, again, for clarification, this process is discussing rights to do things. Just because they present it on a plan and it gets approved here today, they still have to engineer it. And if it doesn't work with regard to the rules and regulations of the code, they don't get to do it. They have to, they have to change and accommodate for things such as floodplain and conveyance of, of the Pierce Creek. Is that accurate?
Correct. And one reason that staff has requested the 35-foot drainage easement along the south property line, which is not the Pierce Drain side, is because there is a conveyance ditch that drains into Pierce Drain there, that we want to maintain access to. It takes drainage, I believe, from the main roadway and other properties out there. So we want to be able to get in there and maintain that, if need be.
Okay. And do you know, does the county currently have easements over Pierce Drain? It's a named conveyance. I would presume they would.
I would presume we would. If we don't, we will also be asking for an easement along Pierce. I would let Bob respond to that, because he probably knows off the top of his head.
Okay. All right. All right. Very good.
I didn't see it on the plan. I looked for it, but I didn't see it. But that doesn't mean it's not there.
It's because as far as we're aware, it doesn't exist, but we've agreed to provide it.
Yeah.
And again, that'll, that'll be the mechanism by which the county can then maintain, put it on probably a regular maintenance schedule.
Correct. And I'll get with Public Works to see if they already have such a maintenance schedule for that area.
Okay. Very good.
I had one question for Mr. Goss. What's the thinking on the developer's side as to why they do not want to have a solid fence? It seems like that's a pretty compelling request.
Well, the only, as I think Chelsea pointed out, the location where you would put the fence would be along the north side and maybe the east side. But if you take that east side where there's already chain link fence and it's, I showed that one picture, it wasn't very big, but if you try and build a wall up against the fence, you're going to take out a lot of vegetation as you build the wall. It's pretty thick vegetation. That's why I provided that photo. You can't see Garden Lakes from where that building is proposed. And so what we're asking is, does there really need to build a six-foot wall along the fence along the east side where you don't really need it? And it allows us, which you have to ultimately. And it allows us, which we have to remember, we're voluntarily, voluntarily agreeing to place fencing where it's not required. But part of that is to try and make it an affordable fence, six-foot opaque fence as opposed to a, a, a wall.
And to not conflate chain link fence with PVC fence, are you, are you referring to a PVC solid fence?
It would be a PVC opaque fence, six-foot opaque fence. Right now, there's a, on the east side, there's a six-foot chain link fence with the wire, twisted wires at the top.
Yeah.
And then they've got a hedge running along the inside of it. So it's more or less opaque along the fence, but then you have all the vegetation in the woodlands on our side between that fence and Pierce Drain that are adding to the opacity of that area. So we just felt that there really isn't any real need for a, a six-foot wall there. And the truth is, we don't have a three-story building along that side. The closest building's 280 feet away, maybe 284 feet away, and it's two-story. So by, you know, if, except for the fact that we have some three-story buildings, we wouldn't be required to do a wall at all.
And, and again, to clarify, the fence is only required where three-story buildings are adjacent to the property boundary, correct?
Well, the code doesn't specify that, but that's what triggers the fence.
Yeah.
And what we're saying is that usually your project's got three-story buildings next to the property line. This project has one-story buildings next to the property line and two-story buildings next to the property line. The three-story buildings aren't anywhere close.
And, and where, where you do have two-story buildings in close proximity to the property line, are you proposing to do a opaque fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there is a fence there. So as I understand it, the difference between a wall and a fence is a wall requires a foundation, which I think to your point is that it, it takes out more vegetation, trees potentially, where a fence is a narrower footprint, it, it's usually by post.
Yes, sir. And sometimes the walls, as you know, like the, what is it, the Duratec wall, whatever, that where they, they do the panels, you've started to see those happening too. But nonetheless, a wall is, does require foundation and it, and it also is significantly more expensive. So, you know, what we're offering is to add more fencing, opaque fencing, as opposed to putting a wall in areas where, quite frankly, the wall, for the most part, isn't going to serve any, any viable purpose, other than to make us remove more natural vegetation.
All right.
So I would just say this, in my humble experience, is that whenever we put a commercial or active public area next to a single-family residence, there's migration. The migration is people wanting to cut through for whatever reason. And we put up concrete block walls and they bust through them so they can climb through and get to the, the location from one to the other. So I, I understand what you're saying about the vegetation, but if the goal is to try and maintain a prohibition from transient traffic that's not there currently because there's no population on one side of this area to the other, it doesn't really answer that question. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't.
But you just said that if you put up a block wall, they're going to bust through it. That's.
I agree. I'm, I'm being candid that.
Yeah.
But, but it does keep the average person from wandering through in one area and cutting the fence and pulling. Because people can get through fences and they get through less frequently in the walls. That's all.
Absolutely, but I think it represents the intent. If they're proffering a fence, an opaque fence in an area that doesn't require it, I have an opaque fence behind my house and, and it, I don't have people coming through it. The, and it's against a public park. The, the idea that you can do anything to prevent people to come through is, you know, that's, that's really presumptive, the, I think the.
Well, that's, they do make them because they, despite being presumptive, they do work.
The other part of this that I don't like is the fact that it's affordable housing and there's a presumption that the people that live in those areas are going to be more likely to try to trespass.
That's not my presumption.
Okay, all right. I just want to make that clear, that's, it's not those people that we're trying to fence out.
Sir, I'm just saying that I, we used to build public shopping centers and people next door would bust through the walls with sledgehammers at night. So I'm just, I, I know that happens, but it doesn't make it as common, a transient, when you had 192 population from a field to that, access points are always a, an area of contention. That's all. I'm just asking the question.
The other thing I would like to get clarification on from staff, if this were a single-family home, how tall could it be? Could it be, would it be limited to one stories?
35 feet.
Half is three stories.
Three stories. So you could have a three-story, single-family home here.
Single-family homes, yes.
By right. So it's not like it's very different. I know the mass of the building is going to be different, but I think that was the point Mr. Goss was making about the, the edge.
Understood. 192 people on one side of a fence, single-family in the other. That's all, that's my simple.
Probably don't need to say it, but to be honest with you, my opinion, the most effective fencing for security purposes is chain link, heavy-grade chain link fence. We don't allow that in Manti County to be used that way, but along our east property line, that is what Garden Lakes has, is a six-foot chain link fence. And honestly, that is probably a secure way to keep people from going through as, as of any of those choices in terms of maintenance and all that.
We might humbly disagree on that, but anyway.
Well.
How about, somebody mentioned an eight-foot fence. Would that be amenable to you? Would that?
If it's PVC fence, and I think it was Kyle, and where we had the building within 20 feet, if you wanted to add a stipulation that we make that fence eight feet tall, I think we could probably make that work. Over eight feet, you start to get into real structural issues.
Yeah.
But that fence, if you wanted it to be eight feet tall, I don't think that that would be a problem along that section of the property line.
I think that might help.
I, I don't know. I would ask staff if that's something that's even allowed by the code. I know many, many references are six feet, and there are some things that prohibit eight-foot fences. Ms. Liedar, do you have any?
Staff may have a different opinion on that, but.
To request that the eight, eight foot.
Okay.
And, and I, I argue that there are different opinions about how to construct, what plans to use and all this stuff. And I just started raising the questions because we have the residents that live around there asking those questions. And again, you're right. I put up block walls and they break through at night, and, and I get that, but that's not the common conduct. That's my thought.
The, the other part of the effect of chain link fence is a dog.
I was going to say, if you think animals get through fences, your neighbors get.
So, all right, very good. Any other questions for the applicant, Mr. De Lauslang?
Yeah, somebody brought up about fire trucks getting across the canal or the drain.
Yes, sir. Truth is, fire trucks currently have, if, if you had a fire over there that was, the fire trucks that get to, I believe the fire trucks would probably come up the east side of Pierce Drain from 63rd. It's not very far from our site to 63rd, and you've got a nice county easement that technically stops our property, but as you saw from that photo, it's pretty nicely stabilized on and in. So I think fire trucks would choose that route as their preferred route because fire trucks are a pretty darn heavy thing. And we're not proposing to turn that area over there into a big recreation area, but we do know we need to be able to get across that bridge with like lawn tractors and stuff to, to mow and things like that. So I don't know that we could make that bridge strong enough to hold a fire truck and, and comply with the no-ride certificate that the county would want to see as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, we're going to go to staff closing comments. Anything from, from staff?
I have no additional comments.
Okay. All right. And then we're going to go ahead and go to the applicant's closing comments and rebuttal, and then no more questions and we'll close the hearing. So Mr. Goss, any, your closing comments, rebuttal, if you would, please, and.
I think we've touched on most of them. The, I was just talking to Ms. Liedar about the fact that along, I don't know if I can show it really. I'll always call this an alma mater on school board. I think what, what we're talking about is adding an eight-foot, making that PVC fence eight feet tall along this side of this building right here. And I think we're, we're talking about putting an eight-foot fence along this side of this building right here, where Kyle was talking about wanting it to be eight feet tall instead of six feet tall.
All right. Currently, we don't have a stipulation that includes that, but if your intent is to do it, we understand that that would be your intent. We acknowledge that. And if you would, make sure that there's a drafted stipulation by the time it gets in front of the board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consideration. So what's the will of the?
I just want to say, I, I think they did a good job. Infill is always difficult, I get that. And when you have residents that have been there and have green space, they don't like buildings. So I get all that, but the 66% or 55%, I like that. I like we have affordable housing. I know I hear from my neighbors all the time, we don't want any more development, but I think this is well thought out. Bob, I think you've done a great job. I mean, I, I may argue about fences, but I think the concept is, is there, and I think we're going to have development. And so what we have to do is get the best development possible, and the commitment to affordable housing is something I think we want to be supportive of. So I'm going to vote for it despite the fencing.
Thank you. And I, I'd also like to point out, as a licensed civil engineer in the state of Florida, one of my understanding is when we do development, one of the, one of the neighbors made the comment that it, it meters or attenuates the water. Whenever you build a stormwater facility, this site right now is unimproved. Any water that hits, it runs off. When it's developed, it's going to have a stormwater facility that will then allow the attenuation and also many times the component that's disregarded is it treats the stormwater. So it'll, it'll have an improvement in the area with regard to the, the stormwater, you know, rain issues, flooding issues. So with that, we have a motion by Ms. Kebba, second by Mr. Smock, and if you would, please vote.
Mr. Chair.
We have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We just want to understand where you're expecting that eight-foot fence. Are you expecting it along the south property line adjacent to building B all the way down to where it's adjacent to building F also?
Just to report what I witnessed from Mr. Goss, it was the three properties that are adjacent on the west side of the, yeah, southwest. So.
Mr. Chair.
We, we have a motion and a second, so we need to limit the additional testimony right now.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that in your stipulations when you.
Yes, ma'am. So, so staff has a graphic that represents the intent, and again, we as a planning commission acknowledge the intent of the applicant.
Good morning, Rosina Lider, but staff, can you put the doc camera, please? And it has been sworn, here is the applicant mark, and it's going to be into, into the records that we're going to add, and a stipulation for board that a eight-foot fence is going to be located in this portion of the site.
For the record, can you turn that where north is up?
Yes.
There we go.
Yes, sorry. I apologize.
Again, as an engineer, I can't read it unless it's, north is up.
So, Mr. Chair, would be that in your alternative motion for approval, you'd be adding a stipulation A, A11 regarding a proposed eight-foot wall? Was that what you?
Fence. Opaque, opaque fence.
Eight-foot opaque fence at the location noted by Rosina Lider in the record.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so we had a motion, is, is that modification, that clarification, is that acceptable, Ms. Kebba?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Smock, your second? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, not to pound this anymore, but the required landscaping will be on the outside of that eight-foot fence, Mr. Goss?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I, I would believe that's consistent with LDC, so, all right. So, all right, very good. Motion second, please vote. All right. With that, we have a, an approval 6-0, again with Mr. Roth being not present. All right.
Mr. Chair, can we take a 10-minute break?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I was going to, trying to get the clerk's side, but we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. and take a ten-minute recess. Thank you.
Maximum of 50 feet. So, this is our, our project team. We have Matt Bennett and John Woodman here with, with Homes by Town. Margaret Tousin and Jake Bibler with ZNS are our, our project planners. And Walter DeGos with ZNS is our civil engineer on the project. Just a little bit of background on the developer. This is Zilber Project. Zilber was founded in 1948 and has been building homes in Florida since the late 1970s. Zilber was one of the inaugural home builders within Lakewood Ranch, going back to 1995. And, and they built, and they built homes within Terra as well. Zilber has developed 2,000 luxury apartment homes on the west coast of Florida in the last six years. So, this is a, an experienced, high-quality builder that is wanting to do this project in Terra. All right. This is an aerial of the subject site. As Rosina mentioned, it's approximately 7.48 acres, located on the east side of Terra Boulevard, just south of State Road 70 and just west of the interchange with I-75. The future land use designation on the site is a mixture of ROR and PSP-1. The existing zoning of the site is PDC. We're proposing to rezone that today to PDMU. As I mentioned previously, the Terra zoning ordinance was amended in 2010 to add a land use exchange mechanism, which specifically allowed for the commercial uses on these parcels to be converted administratively to multifamily. Apparently, nobody considered the fact that there was this split PDR/PDC zoning at the time. So, you wouldn't actually be able to do it administratively, which is why we're, we're coming back to clean it up with, with PDMU zoning today. All right. This is a close-up that shows the area of the GDP that we're talking about. Obviously, the Terra DRI as a whole, you're talking about more than 1,100 acres, more than 2,700 residential units. It has commercial, has hotels, public shopping center, gas station, ALF. The subject site is actually made up of three development parcels. So, it encompasses the goodwill parcel, parcel 3V, and parcel 3Z. And those parcels are approved for 34,000 square feet of commercial, or, as we're discussing today, the potential to convert to up to 156 units of multifamily. All right. This is the conceptual design of the project layout on the site. As you can see, the parcel is located in the, the commercial portion of the Terra project. There's an existing three-story Hilton just to the east, and also a three-story country inn and suites, which is also just to the east of the project. You can see the project has been designed to create a significant setback from any of the adjoining single-family residential uses, approximately 245 feet to the nearest single-family home, which greatly exceeds any of the requirements of your code. There's also a 20-foot roadway buffer on the southern boundary of the project. Then you have Stone River Road, and you have a mature, existing buffer within the residential subdivision to the south before you, before you get to any residential units. This is a graphic depiction of that separation distance with buffering. We are also adding a stipulation today, which I've handed to the clerk, and which you can see up there on the screen. So, we're proffering a stipulation today that all multifamily buildings on these parcels would be set back a minimum of 200 feet from the nearest single-family residential dwelling. So, this is a height comparison showing the, the proposed project in relation to the country inn and suites, which is just to the east. And based on the approved drawings at the county, that shows that project is, is existing at 43 feet to the top of the, the Mansour Decline, which is the county standard. So, that, that is existing at 43 feet. Again, we're proposing a maximum of, of 50 feet on this site. There are multifamily uses mixed in with the single-family throughout the Terra project. This is an example of an area within Terra where you have a three-story multifamily building. It's approximately 175 feet from the nearest residential home. And this is an aerial showing the, the existing WoodSpring Suites, which is the, the new hotel they built out by the interstate. That is an existing three-story hotel, again, within Terra, and it is approximately 200 feet from the nearest home. What we're proposing today exceeds all of those distances, and so we think it is compatible with the surrounding uses. We do have a positive staff report. We appreciate all of staff's work on this project. We're respectfully requesting your recommendation of approval. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Rudisell, you said you had a proffered stipulation. I don't know that we have it.
I put it up on the screen. I have some more copies if you'd like to...
Yes, please.
Mr. Rudisell only brought two.
It was short, and, and it was, and it was in the presentation, so I wasn't sure you would need it, but I, I do have extra copies.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Mr. Bradford.
Is there a land use equivalency matrix included as part of your original approval to trade out those units to account for traffic?
Yes.
Fine.
Yes, so it's been reviewed by traffic and found to be trip equivalent to what's approved.
One of the things that is unusual is you said that the, I'm not even sure how to phrase it, the authorization, the approval, the, the ability to do multifamily is an administrative process, and that was, that's already been granted, is that...
Correct. So, that was added to the zoning ordinance in 2010. When we looked at it with staff, they said, "Well, you've got PDC zoning." And we said, "Well, that's fine. The zoning ordinance already authorizes it." It appeared to be internally inconsistent on its face. So, we, you know, we went around a few times with staff, but ultimately, we have to come to the board anyways on this, so we said, "We'll, we'll clean up the zoning at the same time."
And the, I'm sorry to, you already made your presentation, but a portion of the impetus of coming back to the board would be the increase in, not necessarily height, but stories?
Yes. The height was, going from three stories to four was really the only thing that was an ask for this project that was different, that required us to come back to the board.
Did the previous authorizations allow the same height? So, we're not, that's what I'm trying to get to. We're not increasing height. We're increasing the reference to stories.
No, we are increasing the, so the existing approval is three stories, 35 feet.
Okay.
We're requesting four stories, 50 feet.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicant?
I just, did, did you have any community meetings in regards to this? Is there anybody in the neighborhood that's close to this? Because it's surrounded by commercial, right?
Right. I mean, the, I can put the, the graphic. We did have a neighborhood workshop on this. Terra is an active community, and we did have several folks participate in that, in that neighborhood workshop. But yes, you're right. This is, this is an approved commercial parcel, parcel already. It's part of the commercial quadrant of Terra. The, as I said, the nearest residential home. We're, we're stipulating that our, we won't have a building closer than 200 feet, so there's a good separation.
Any, any additional questions for the applicant? The, the site plan you put up on the, on the screen, is that, is that a binding document, or are you just showing it for informational purposes?
We're showing it for information. It is conceptual, but that's why we added the stipulation to, because we're, we're actually showing, we're, we're expecting the building, nearest building, to be 245 feet. That's what we showed, but we're stipulating to a minimum of 200. So, yes, that, that's a conceptual design.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything further? Anything? All right. Thank you, Mr. Rudisell. All right. We'll go to staff presentation. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. This is Laura Gonzalez with Development Services Department, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Okay. The, the applicant's request today is to approve an amendment of the Terra Development Order, MAP-H, to recognize the conversion from a square footage of commercial uses to allow, allow up to 156 multifamily units on a total of 7.48 acres, and increase the maximum height for the multifamily use on the project site. Also, the request includes the approval of an amendment of the, to the zoning ordinance and the general development plan to resound from PDC, to resound the project site from PDC to PDMU, and amend the, and recognize or reflects all of these changes of the development order, allowing the multifamily use up to 156 units with a maximum height of, height of four stories and 50 feet, and approving the schedule of permitted uses as voluntarily provided by the applicant. The Terra DRIs consist of a total of 1,124 acres, and it is located at the southwest corner of State Road 70 and I-75, and extends to Brayden River Road to the west. The project site, with a total of 7.48 acres, is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Stone River Road, south side of the State Road Here we have the project size. We can see the goodwill parcel that has, consists of a 6,400 square foot building that will be demolished to be included into the development, and parcel 3B and 3Z that are currently vacant, and they correspond to Lot 5 and 6 of the Terra commercial subdivision. Here we have some picture of the project site. We have the goodwill parcel in picture number one, the parcel 3Z in picture number two, and we have the parcel 3B from the south side where the single-family residential are. And the parcel 3B to the east, when, more to the east, when we can see the FPL easement. This other picture shows the surrounding uses. We have the picture one, the bank that is to the north. Then we have the hotels to the east, and the single-family subdivision to the south. And then we have a view to the west, when we can see at the end the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Stone River Road. And further there, further this point, there are vacant and also a parcel that was recently resoned as a recreational use. This is the map of the future land use category, and we can see that most part of the DRI is REC-6, REC-6. And there are some smaller areas that, within the, within the ROR and mixed-use future land use category. Also, there is a PSP-1 area that crosses the entire DRI from north to south and corresponds to, to the FPL easement. The project site, future land use category, is ROR, and also there is a portion of the Most of the DRI is PDR, the zoning district, and there are smaller areas that are some PDC along the State Road 70, 70. The project site is within the PDC. Terra, Terra was approved in 1980 with a preliminary plan development for Terra Phase 1. Since this date, there has been several changes to the site. I just want to highlight that in 2006, the project site was resoned to PDC, and as the applicant mentioned, in 2010, a land use equivalency matrix was added, which allows for the exchange of entitlements between the permitted uses throughout the DRI. This table shows a summary of the aggregate of the approved land uses in the total development area and the total entitlements per use. So, we can see here that the total is, as I mentioned before, 1,124 acres. About 37% correspond to the residential use with a total of 413 acres. 6% is for commercial, office, assisted living facility, and mini warehouses. That is about 66 acres. There are like 570 acres that correspond to golf courses and open space, and there are other uses there. The, the table also shows the total entitlements. There are 2,719 dwelling units in total, about 400,000 square feet of non-residential uses. There are also hotels and the characteristics of the golf courses. All of these entitlements are distributed, distributed within the entire DRI according to MAP-H and GDP. That shows the different uses in the site and the entitlements. I have here an area that corresponds to the project size, so we can see here the two options that the applicant is proposing. Option A, A, that is for the multifamily use with a total of 156 dwelling units, and option B, that is the current commercial entitlement that this parcel have for a total of 34,400 square feet. The, option A, the number of residential units is, is the result of applying the land use equivalency matrix and the conversion factor of 4.45, 44 multifamily units per 1,000 square feet of commercial. Then we have the dimensional standards. There are no changes compared to what the code requires of buffers and setbacks, except for the height, that, as I was mentioning before, the applicant is requesting to increase the height from three stories and 35 feet to four story and 50 feet, subject to the Building High Compatibility Standards contained in the Land Development Code, Section 401.5.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt? Go back to that slide.
Sorry?
Go back. Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt? Go back to that slide.
Go back.
So, there are changes to the ordinance with the setbacks now that we have the stipulation.
Okay, yeah, but it was today that...
No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. This is the, I was telling that, that the applicant is requesting this increase in height subject to Section 401, the Building High Compatibility, that requires additional 20-foot setback over the minimum setback required for each floor of both three stories. To the south property line, the minimum setback requirement is, would be 45 feet. Now, we have an stipulation from the applicant that increased this setback. Also, the, this section of the code for plan development requires additional building design standards to reduce the impact of the building and give the appearance of less bulk to the street frontage and the adjacent structure. It's important to mention that no specific approval has been requested. Positive action, positive aspect, sorry. Option A for multifamily use represents an appropriate transition between the commercial uses and the dynamic of the State Road 70 to the north and the single-family residential uses to the south. The traffic study concludes that the multifamily proposal is trip equivalent to the current commercial entitlements, which are vested by the DRI, and as such, transportation concurrence is met. The proposed change will not adversely impact the demand for schools, recreational areas, and other public facilities and services. Negative aspects: the proposed height exceeds the maximum height of the current ordinance, and the four-story multifamily building may generate negative impacts related to the light and noise on the single-family residential areas to the south. Mitigating measures: the project will comply with the requirements of the Section 401.5, Building High Compatibility, and at time of the preliminary site plan and final site plan application, the applicant shall provide an analysis on how the proposal will mitigate the visual impact on the southern adjacent development of single-family homes. Existing tree cover on this side of the property and the required buffer planting will mitigate the negative impact of this building over the multifamily, over the single-family area. With the proposed stipulations, staff finds the request to be consistent with the policy of the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan, and the compliance with these requirements and all applicable standards of the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan will be reviewed in detail at time of the preliminary site plan and final site plan application. Any questions?
Questions for staff? Don't think so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and open the public comment portion of the hearing. I've got a couple folks who have already signed up. We'll just run through this, and then we'll open it up to anybody else who wishes to come forward. So, the first speaker that we have is Shay Hockenberry. If you could, please come forward, state your name, that you've been sworn, county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Shay Hockenberry. I am a resident of Manatee County, and yes, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I'm a single mother of three grown children that I raise right here in Manatee County. My oldest daughter is a young professional. You probably saw her here earlier, and she still lives at home because there's not safe housing, appropriate housing for young professionals in this area. As you know, it, there's a lot of affordable housing being proposed in these areas, but not a lot of market-rate housing for the workforce, the professional workforce, such as teachers, hospital workers, nurses, and so forth. I'm here not only to support the need for this alternative housing, but also the property owner's rights to develop their property in accordance with Manatee County's Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. As you heard, this property was previously zoned for residential, had a rezone, and does have an active MRI, an active DRI with those entitlements. As a, as a business owner and having run country clubs and other hospitality industries, I have seen firsthand how hard it is to find quality staff that have appropriate housing nearby. And so, I support this, and I ask this commission to move forward in supporting this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker we have is Deborah Mazafaro, Mazafaro? Yes, ma'am, if you would, come forward and... Please step up to the podium.
Deborah Mazafaro, I'm a resident of Manatee County, and I've been sworn.
Thank you.
We were hoping to have a different order. We have...
This is the order that people signed up. We can orchestrate a meeting that way, so...
I have handouts?
Please.
I moved to Manatee County in 1987, and after getting my driver's license, I got a real estate license, like most people, but I don't work in that. I actually am a sales and marketing consultant internationally with food companies. I lived in southern Manatee County for 28 years, moved to St. Pete for seven years, and then decided I finally needed to get off the water. And as a golfer for 25 years, I chose Terra Golf and Country Club because it's one of the best in the country. I played all over the world. If you, am I in charge of this? We've seen this slide, I think, or this picture several times. The yellow is the subject property. The red circle is my property that I just bought in February. If I step out into my driveway and look down the street, I can see the corner that this is going on, and a four-story building will overshadow my neighborhood. The street that goes in front of my house right now is a quiet residential street, and it'll, it will become a thoroughfare. So, the Terra DRI has been established for 40 years. It's all owner-occupied, single-family homes and condos. You saw three-story buildings. There's very few of those, but they're, they're privately owned, owner-occupied. It's a non-gated community and, and a public golf course combined. And the master, Terra Master Association maintains common areas that the county doesn't at our expense. So, there are county roads running through our, our DRI, but we maintain those. The proposed apartments, new construction on the property zoned for retail and professional services for Terra's village, and we really have created a village there. I walk 10 minutes to the country club. I walk seven minutes to a Publix and seven, or five mom-and-pop restaurants, and many other places that, that I can actually walk to. So, in many places in Manatee County, we've tried to create these villages outside of the downtown area, and Terra actually has become that. These would be rental units, not owner-occupied. There'll be no community buy-in or ownership, and the additional use of the county roads with no financial commitment or upkeep from the, the owner of this property. We've talked about this building height compatibility. We really object to that. Yes, there's a hotel, but you cannot see the hotel from any of the properties that are currently there. This, this additional story will be sight-seen from many different private, single-family homes. We talked maybe a little bit about infill earlier today, and this is the service area that you guys have mandated, or that the county has mandated for infill. We are well to the east of that blue line, which is the Brayden River. So, this is what our petition is, that, that these are not compatible with the current community of owner-occupied homes. The height required to accommodate four stories is not legally allowed on this parcel, and the financial contributions to the community maintenance haven't been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The next speaker we have is Ms. Karen Clark. If you would, come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn.
I'm going to waste my time.
Thank you very much. All right. After Ms. Clark, we had Kathy Woolley. And again, same, same thing. State your name, county of residence, and that you have been sworn.
And, Mr. Chair, she submitted for a 10-minute.
Okay. All right. So, you're speaking on behalf of a, a group of folks and requested 10 minutes. Okay. All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
We need a box for me. Sorry. Morning, commissioners, legal and administrative staff. My name is Kathy Woolley, and I am a Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. You have just seen that the development order for Terra was executed in 1980. That's over 40 years ago. Terra was 1,124 acres of wet cattle grazing land, and you've seen where we're located, out near I-75. Terra was originally considered in the hinterlands. We were the out east of Manatee. We were the out east of Manatee's real county activity. We're one of the county's first DRIs, a development of regional impact, and along with Palm Air, we were the county's largest residential associations until Lakewood Ranch was developed. Our 2070 residences are all privately owned and pay Tara fees. Everybody contributes. They consist of flats, villas, duplexes, four- and six-plex condos, single-family homes, and middle-class lovely homes. In all of Tara, there only exists one three-story set of buildings. They were built in 1990. No more were ever built after that. There are four buildings with 30 flats each. That's 120 residences out of Tara's 2,070 homes, and that is 5% of all the residents in Tara are only three stories, not four stories. The other 1,950 homes are all either one or two stories. Our master plan community was designed with all our residential properties south of Stone River Road, and with a modest 66-acre neighborhood services area on that northeast corner. It was, there are currently only, all the other three-story buildings in Tara are on the northeast corner. There are no buildings for three stories, other than the terraces to the south. The buildings that have been built to three stories, clearly some of them are over the 35-foot limit, but that's because the drawings that approve that go to the county's administrative department, the development department, and at times they've permitted extra square footage to make the design or the attractiveness of the unit work better. For those of you who are young, we know about Manatee County's activity nodes, but what's a neighborhood services area? In the past, it's included a salon, a dentist, a pizza, and a Chinese restaurant. It's included our geckos and Publix with its needed pharmacy, two banks, a gas station, and three hotels. You get it. While we're an activity hub for Tara, we are definitely not comparable to the larger Creekwood Shopping Center with those big-box stores. I don't want you to think that we're opposed to change. Tara's managed plenty of change in 40 years, with 10 ordinance revisions, and I'd like to speak just a little bit about those. The first change proposed eons ago was a car dealership. Just imagine potentially fouling the Evers Reservoir with an environmental spill, or those vehicles lined up and lit up all night. An auto dealership could never be considered a neighborhood services use, and the commissioners back then understood that and denied it. In 1998, we supported the developer swap of the eastern main entry parcel to assure that the bank was built on State Route 70 and not next door to one of our single-family homes on Stone River as originally proposed. Next came the proposal for the drugstore, for the Walgreens on the west side of our main entrance, opposite CVS. We presented the county with two 1998 letters from the developer's own attorney. Those letters stated that the developer had yielded all their rights to build on the environmentally sensitive land on the west side of Tara Boulevard. In return, they received an extra 75,000 square foot of space designated rights on the east side in our neighborhood services area. Since the earliest days of Tara, another indifferent developer had planned a costly and totally unneeded Tara Bridge to nowhere, and another commission wisely removed this expense from the county's long-term planning. None of the existing buildings in Tara's Twelve Oaks Commercial Zone even come close to the elevation that is requested for rezoning these properties. Tara's commercial and residential zoning has always been, since 1980, three stories and 35 feet, and just think about it, if you've been out our way, almost everything around us is exactly the same. Creekwood, Rosedale, Walmart across I-75, everything to the south and the west of us, 35 feet. About four years ago, the Wood Springs Hotel was denied a four-story request by the commission, quickly yielded to build three stories. So why permit this change in height limit now? We've been very clear that at 35 feet, you wouldn't be hearing from us. At three stories, we'd be home doing something better. The developer wants to build four stories with a peaked roof, and they propose 156 one- and two-bedroom market-rate units on a scant 5.7 acres, because the two acres to the east aren't usable because of the FPL easement and the Nonsense Creek. Even the county can't require that many parking spaces. They want 325-plus parking spaces. It's more than the entire Publix parking field. For a $2,800 a month apartment, the renter needs to make $100,000 to year to be spending about a third of their income. Okay? That is a really high annual income for our Tara residents. To close, don't current property owners have some property rights? Shouldn't county zoning offer some continuity? Property rights and reasonable expectations should not always belong to those who are just starting with vacant land. The county has the potential to approve this rezoning and subsequent uses for those vacant lots that will significantly diminish the values of the existing properties and the quality of life of Tara residences. So why, after surviving so much change over the 40 years, does this zoning request seem just so over the top? These three parcels are one of two remaining larger commercial buildable areas in Tara. We would welcome residential uses on those parcels if they were built within the three-story and 35-foot limit, and if they were a bit more compatible with our community. Later, you'll see some pictures of what Zilber is building over in Lakewood Ranch. They do not, those pictures do not look like what they're proposing to build at Tara. Tara would welcome residential that became members of our Tara Master Association and contributed their fair share to the community's common operating expenses. This building won't contribute and will cost. We must surely, finally, be nearing the end of the endless build-out of the Tara Master Plan. How could it be suddenly okay and so late in the game to revise such a longstanding zoning ordinance? An ordinance that has never permitted a PDMU designation and never permitted this height? How have three hotels manage with three stories, but just not this apartment building can't manage with three stories? This is just a change that Tara might not survive. It is too high, it's too much, and it's not compatible, and no effort to make it compatible. If it looked like their product at Lakewood Ranch, you wouldn't be hearing from us. Lastly, Tara is adjacent to a Manatee County-designated entryway. As such, the entryways have requirements for aesthetics and balance. We can't imagine, with all the other places that are building and could build a four-story apartment building, why the county would ever agree to this sore thumb towering over Tara and the tourist and visitor's entryway. This is the wrong place for this apartment complex at the requested height with the lack of infill compatibility well outside the urban area. This is a change that takes us all in the wrong direction. Please unanimously recommend denial of this undesirable rezoning application, and thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, he also filled out the 10-minute speaker card.
Okay, thank you. So if you could, state your name, county residence, that you've been sworn, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Good morning. My name is Brian Clark. I've been sworn. I'm a Manatee County resident and a homeowner in the Tara community. The community known as Tara has long been characterized by its unique charm, local identity, and strong sense of community. However, in recent years, the neighborhood has experienced a significant increase in traffic congestion due to its location and popularity. I share with most of my neighbors and friends a deep concern about the location and scope of the project before you today. The neighborhood already suffers from heavy traffic congestion, primarily during peak hours. It's almost impossible to get out of Tara Boulevard onto State Route 70 during early morning hours and then late in the afternoon. The additional strain caused by increased multifamily housing development will exacerbate this situation. The primary concern I have is traffic congestion. I submit that adding more housing units would invariably lead to more vehicles on the road, worsening an already challenging situation. State Route 70 west of I-75 that includes the Tara Boulevard intersection has the highest volume of all non-interstate roadways in Manatee or Sarasota Counties. This was brought into the public eye on July 21 in a Sarasota Herald Tribune article, which was on the front page. This intersection has the highest 2022 daily volume of traffic of any roadway in Manatee County. It's been stated 73,000 vehicles per average day in 2022, and this has got worse, obviously, since then. In year 2020, this segment of State Route 70 had 59,000 vehicles per average day. The traffic conditions are only getting worse. Adding 300-plus vehicles to this already congested area is not really a good idea. The State Route 70 roadway segment of Tara Boulevard is operating at an unacceptable level of Service F, which is defined as forced traffic flow in which the volume of traffic approaching the intersection exceeds the capacity or volume of traffic that can be served. There's been multiple accidents and two fatalities that I know of in this area. State Route 70 west of I-75 has a volume-to-capacity ratio of over 1.0. This results in excessive long delays and vehicle queuing to get out of Tara Boulevard onto State Route 70. No improvements are planned in the next five years by FDOT or the Manatee County for the intersection of State Route 70 and Tara Boulevard. This is per the MPO, Transportation Improvement Program, 2022-23 to 2026-27, which were modified on July 19, 2023. So in summary, the traffic conditions are only getting worse. Limiting additional family, multifamily housing in a neighborhood already burdened with heavy traffic congestion is not a prudent approach to preserving the well-being of our community. So I thank you for this consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Krasnov.
Excuse me? You have my name up on his card.
Do you have William Phillips on the screen? And you would...
I was Brian Clark.
Okay.
I have his name written down, right?
I'm sorry, who are you? Okay, all right. We're not, Mr., I don't know. The next name I have is Mike Krasnov. I'm not sure if... All right.
I have an opportunity.
No, you'll have an opportunity. It's...
You'll proceed, please.
I'm sorry, we're not going to orchestrate who goes first. There's an electronic system that everybody signs up on. Somehow, I think we might have missed you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission and administration and legal staff, I was supposed to speak last year, but I'm still going to present this as be brief. My name is Mike Krasnov. I'm a proud member of the Tara community. On behalf of all the Tara residents, I want to thank you for the time allotted us today to strongly oppose the rezoning application before you. To summarize, we have given our grave concerns about the possible rezoning from commercial to multi-use. Specifically, we are very concerned about what this rezoning will do to exacerbate the already heavy and life-threatening traffic issues on Tara Boulevard and from Tara Boulevard eastward on State Route 70 to I-75. Our history dictates that new construction and additional populace, plus the vehicular traffic on this site, will negatively impact the entire Tara community, our quality of life, as well as our property values and our property rights. We have also stated our deep concerns about the governance of this property and the overall adverse effect on our property's general upkeep and maintenance. All Tara's existing residential property is a required member of the Tara Master Association and are responsible for paying their fair share of annual landscaping, irrigation, sign and lighting expenses, plus the routine compliance with the Architectural Review Committee, who will pay for, who will pay for their fair share for the proposed several hundred new residents having to use these Tara components. Then, too, there is an important issue regarding the site plan for this project. The plaintiff has neglected to provide a detailed site plan, which you could review and evaluate, not only by you, but also by the commissioners, who must give their final We do not believe the site sketches provided the county with enough description for you to make, you and the commissioners, to make the most informed decision. It is not too late to ask for a more complete, detailed site plan from the developer. We would welcome such a request. To us, the facts are clear, that this rezoning application should not proceed further. If the scale, and especially the height, are modified to comply with the longstanding Tara and East County zoning requirements, you might consider that. Nothing less should be acceptable to you. Again, we sincerely thank you for allowing us to present our side of this issue, and we greatly appreciate your time and consideration on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, again, for clarification, Ms. Karen Clark, you waived your right to speak?
I did.
Okay. And who is William Phillips? Okay, you're next on the list, so, all right, if you would, come forward, state your name, county of residence, and that you've been sworn, and you'll have clerk?
I only need three minutes.
Okay, all right, three minutes. Thank you, sir.
My name is William Phillips. I am sworn, and I am a Manatee County resident. I live in the Tara Preserve. There are a few things that, even with the hotels that have become more or less long-term stays for a lot of people, there's been a lot of increased crime in terms of drugs and car thefts, burglaries, also petty things like in the area by the fence on the easement right by the hotel. People go in there and do donuts and rip the whole thing up. It's a nightmare. Anyway, compatibility, we think this is wrong. The 156 units require so much parking and so many vehicles that the traffic is just going to be unbelievable. As the last gentleman pointed out, or the gentleman before pointed out, that we have the highest traffic flow in all of Manatee and Sarasota County off of the interstate. The height is very disturbing, going from 35 feet to 50 feet with four stories. We just think that that is the wrong way for this to go. We had initial concerns about Nonsense Creek because they had it listed as a dry streambed, which it is not. It is a very important drainage for storms and happens to run right in my backyard, and that really has to be maintained. But we really, we object to this significantly. We think it will diminish our property values. I bought my home in 2007 here, and I would really hate to see this four-story monstrosity sitting at the entrance to our incredible community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker. All right, the next speaker signed up is Joseph DeBardalomo.
Joseph DeBardalomeo, 20-year resident of Manatee. I have been sworn.
Thank you. And you'll have 10 minutes.
Commissioners, administration, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. So why this change now? So the first homes in Tara were built in 89. So our existing footprint has been in existence for 34 years. We all love where we live. If you'll note, there's no tall buildings anywhere around Tara. There's no tall buildings at Creekwood, at Rosedale, or around the Walmart on 75. Everything is three stories or less. Mr. Rudisol, in his presentation, mentioned three stories more than a dozen times. And if I ask questions, they're basically rhetorical. And if you're wondering how I got this picture, it was a very high ladder. So currently, we have 2,070 residences, 1,950 are two-story, 120 are three-story. Nonsense Creek, named appropriately. This is not a ditch. We've had a record drought in Manatee. So that first picture is an overstatement. I don't even know how water got there. But this next picture is a recent photo after the last hurricane. We got four inches of rain, and this is what it looked like. And living in Tara for 20 years, I've been here when we got 15 inches of rain and the roads were flooded out. So this is an issue. I need somebody to turn these pages. Okay. So this is what the Zilber Group built at Lakewood Ranch and what they propose at Tara. Two stories are appropriate. Nice. Perfect. Four stories are extreme, overwhelming, an obstacle to a lot of different things. This is what four stories looks like looming over nearby homes. Would you like to be in the shadow of this? We've got 30 years of plants, landscaping, outdoor space, pool, privacy, 34 years of people seeing sunrises in their homes. Instead, they're going to see a four-story monstrosity. This is going to be short and sweet. I appeal to all of you to deny the rezon because it is incompatible. The change in height is too high. We often hear about the slippery slope. Three stories was not how it started. It started at one and two stories. We approved three stories. Where are we going to end? Are we going to be like Marina Jacks, where we have skyscrapers now in Manatee County? It's humorous, but, you know, once you start down that path, you don't know where it's going to go. There's too much stormwater risk. They just redid 70 and 75. Anybody who goes in that area can see the large pools of water that have never been there before. The more we pave over, the less the ground absorbs, and the more runoff there is. This plan is too dense for the area. And lastly, it's an unreasonable traffic situation. And what was remarkable to me is during one of the presentations, it said that the traffic would be consistent with the current retail traffic, which makes no sense to me unless we're going to pave over everything that exists and just replace it. So actually, what they said is we're going to double the traffic. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker we have, my page closed. Mr. Lincoln, you signed up two times.
They said I had to sign up for both hearings.
Okay.
At the front, when I was signing in.
And you're speaking for 10 minutes?
Yes. Given that there's two, you could indulge me if I need a little extra time at the back, but I'll try not to use it.
Okay, all right.
And I have, this is a copy of the letter that I sent in, and also a supporting planning report. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Robert Lincoln. I have been sworn. I am a resident of Sarasota County, but I'm here today representing the Tara Master Association. I haven't been here in a while, so I'll do a quick introduction. I'm a land use and local government attorney. I've been doing that for 30 years. I'm also a planner. I was a planner with Sarasota County. I have my master's degree in planning from Florida State. I was an associate researcher at the Florida Atlantic Florida International Institute Land Use and Urban Environmental Problems. I was an associate professor of urban and regional planning at Michigan State University. I'm board certified in county and local government law. I'm pretty much, I'm considered, have been recognized as an expert in comprehensive planning and the application of zoning laws. And my presentation to you, while it will tie into some of the objections that you've heard, is quite simple. You can't approve, you can't recommend approval of this because it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and a number of different grounds, partially because they have not provided a PSP, and they can't demonstrate compatibility, and a lot of the other things that they ought to be able to distribute in order to amend a plan development district, particularly where they're asking to change the height and other kinds of entitlements. But I want to first identify the density. If I could have, I have a presentation here. So as you've heard, Tara's 43 years old, largely built out. These are some of the entranceway areas. And the applicant wants to change the core regulations. Density of over 20 units per acre on this parcel, and increase the height, both the absolute height, 35 to 50 feet, and the number of stories. Change the uses from neighborhood commercial to multifamily. Change the zoning, which they have to do, and providing no PSP. Why? And I think it's the money, and I think that's really a critical issue. 156-unit, four-story, 50-tall-foot building complex at the very entrance to Tara. And you can see the SR 70, the wooded parcel that you see just above and to the left of the yellow Tara Boulevard. The parking lot and building are the Goodwill. The wooded area is the rest of the parcel. It's at the entrance. And you have to recommend denial because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it's not consistent with the requirements of the LDC for a plan development, particularly without a PSP. So let me talk about the density issue. And let me say first something, talk about the luam and the density issue. Yeah, there was a time when all of Tara was zoned R. That was in 1980, when you did a plan development, a DRI, it was an overlay on the zoning code. In 1996, when they were implementing the modern comprehensive plan and the modern zoning codes, they rezoned Tara to PDR and PDC. Later, they also changed the comprehensive plan at that point and then tweaked it later so that there is PSP, ROR, RES 6, and this property has ROR and PSP. The two areas that they can't build, they can't build on, not only because there's easement there, but because they are designated PSP 1 in the comprehensive plan and on the map. And this is pretty critical. And so let me just say, this idea that, oh, they could have administratively changed the luam, and so this was just some sort of oversight? No. This zoning and these plan designations were in place when they implemented the luam. So to the extent that the luam allows some conversion to, from commercial uses to residential uses, it also says in both ordinances, any use of the luam has got to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. It wasn't a blank check. They weren't saying, we've already determined that any potential use of the luam is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They said it has to be evaluated the time you go to do it. That's now. That's what we're doing now, and in fact, they have to rezon. They have to rezon the PDC. They have to change the, and they have to change the development standards to increase the height. Okay? And those changes are not consistent with the density requirements of the comprehensive plan. And for those of you who may not have had to deal with this before, because this is confusing, the way that the comprehensive plan deals with PSP-designated property, and that's that drainage easement and the FBNL easement, that creek that you just saw, plus the FPNL easement, it's designated PSP 1. It has no inherent density. But if it's adjacent to and under common ownership with property that has denser density, you get to use it for gross density, but not net density. And that's why, in the different plan designations, there are different net and gross densities. And for ROR, which is the 5.63 or 5.7 acres that's actually in the ROR portion of the property, the highest gross, the gross density is 16 units per acre, and the highest net density is 20 units per acre. That means on the entire 7.48 acres, the most units that they can get is 7.8 times 16 units per acre. That includes the PSP area. They're allowed to include it in the gross density for just under 120 units. When you take out that PSP area and you look at the net density, they get, it goes up to 20 units per acre, but there's only 5.63 or 5.7 acres. They only get 114 units. The 156 units is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. They don't get it. The, and let's be clear, they have to change the zoning, they have to change the DRI/DO, they have to, and even if they could do it administratively, which is an issue, they'd still have to amend those things administratively to apply the table. And all of those are actions that require a development order that must be consistent with the plan, and it's not vested. You've got to look at it again, and this is not compatible, and it's not consistent with the plan. You can't recommend approval because it's not consistent with the plan, flat out. We see the single-family home sites. Let me talk about the other reasons why it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan and with the requirements for plan development. This is much more extensively discussed in the letter that I sent everybody, but I want to touch on it. And it goes to the issues of compatibility in their, across the board, their failure to provide a preliminary site plan. What would they have had to do? They would have actually had to show the layout of the property, something more than that conceptual plan that they showed you, and it would be binding, which that was not. And they would have to show how they're going to accommodate parking, how they're going to accommodate drainage, generally speaking. They would have probably had to provide elevations to show what this building's actually going to look like in situ as it's actually going to be approved. They would have had to do a traffic circulation study. And let me just toe to that traffic. That's the thing I forgot to hit on in the luam. The luam is a traffic, is based on traffic equivalencies. So the 156 dwelling units that they're transferring, all that that really says is it's got the same peak hour traffic as the 34,000 square feet of retail-commercial entitlements that they're trading, right? So on a peak hour basis, it matches. That's not the full concurrency story, but the bottom line is, it creates a presumption that it's going to pass concurrency because it's what was already approved. But that doesn't address traffic circulation. If they did a PS, filled PSP, they would have to address traffic circulation. There'd be binding limits on exactly where they're going to put the driveways. They would have actually have to do traffic studies to show not only does it meet concurrency, but that when they put those trips on the road, are they going to need new turn lanes to meet warrants? Is it going to require changing the traffic lights or lights? All those other kinds of things would be tripped. You don't have that because they didn't do a PSP because they don't want to do that for whatever reason at this point. But they haven't hit a bunch of other issues as well. Because they haven't done a PSP, you don't have drawings, setbacks. They haven't addressed additional buffering. Can I have a couple more minutes?
Yeah, as long as you don't filibuster.
I'm really trying not to. But look at all the things that you would expect them to do. Because a plan development doesn't just have to meet the 401 buffering standards, it has to do something more. A plan development is supposed to go above and beyond what the regular zoning standards require. But just saying that they're going to have to meet those standards doesn't tell you what you need to approve a change to a plan development to allow residential at this point. They haven't done that. So they haven't met the plan development standards, and that means they haven't really met the compatibility requirements of the comprehensive plan either. But all these kinds of things, traffic circulation, drainage, they don't even give you initial drainage calculations. Yes, of course, they're going to have to meet the county engineering standards at the point that they eventually do come in for a site plan, but they haven't even had to demonstrate that their idea is feasible because they didn't do a preliminary site plan, which they would at least have to do under those circumstances. They haven't shown the parking, said how much do they intend, need to put, how much do they intend to put, how are they going to accommodate that on this site with buffering and compatibility and everything else? And other than this last-minute stipulation about a overall building setback, you have no idea what those buildings are going to look like and how they're going to be accommodated on the site. So you don't know how this is going to impact the entranceway. You don't know how the traffic circulation is going to work. You don't know what the buildings are going to look like put at the entrance to this, this Tara Boulevard. They're asking, the idea that they're asking for additional height to change the overall development standards and didn't provide you with a PSP and elevations and plans about how they would do it, frankly, I'm shocked. I'm shocked that he would have considered. I'm shocked that the staff would let them get away with it. I'm shocked that it would get any traction at this board whatsoever. They're asking to change the entire, massively change by 33% the height development standards, and they won't even give you anything to show you what they intend to do with it. What is it going to look like? How is it going to be built? For all of those reasons, this isn't just a general objection. That means it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan. That means it's not consistent with the requirements of a plan development under the land development code. And for all of those reasons, and I've identified the specific provisions of the development code in my, in my letter, for all of those reasons, I would suggest that you have to recommend denial of these two applications. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker that signed up is Doug Zimmerman. Hello.
Mr. Chairman.
Hello.
My name is Doug Zimmerman, and I reside in Tara. I'm a Manatee resident, and I've been sworn.
Thank you, sir.
My parents bought in Tara in 2010, and they own the property right across the street at the corner of Stone River and Tara Boulevard. I also own the property next to my mother's house. I also own the property next to my mother's house, and she's 90 years old. I live further down on Stone River in the three-story apartment buildings that everyone keeps doing. There's only 120 building, 120 units in those four buildings, and it's a big area. We have a tennis court, we have a swimming pool, and, uh, which is being used for pickleball now, plus we have ample parking. My parents bought there because the area was fully constructed, and we saw what the community looked like and what it was going to be in the future. The zoning at Terra's been in place for more than 40 years. Terra Golf and Country Community resolves around our golf course, our clubhouse, our tennis courts, our restaurant, and many social events that our friends and neighbors use on a daily basis. We're not just members, we own the club. The residents of the proposed building will have zero ties to our community. They won't be using the golf course, the clubhouse, the restaurant, the bocce courts, or anything else in Terra because they just don't belong and they never will. In fact, they have to leave the community by car, based on what we've seen so far, for any recreational activities. So this will add even more traffic, traffic in a congested area. Everyone talks about traffic, but F D O T and their study confirms that State Route 70 in front of our community is the largest traffic area in Manatee and Sarasota County. With all the building going on east on State Route 70, it's not going to get any better. When they did a traffic study on Stone River Boulevard, they did it after all the snowbirds have left, so those numbers probably aren't accurate. Why do we want to add to the problem and let this project happen? The proposed building height violates all the codes that have been in place and observed for more than 40 years by multiple developers, and as the gentleman said, Zilber was one that was in Terra itself. That would tower over the Ashley Oaks area where my mother lives, and she has enough trouble with people she thinks looking in off of Terra Boulevard, and now she'll have people looking down in her pool cage. She hasn't been in her pool in three years because of the, all the traffic that's there now, and this isn't going to make it any better. From what we've seen, this property looks like it could be military housing, and it just wouldn't look right in the Terra neighborhood. Concerning the community meeting conducted by Zilber and their hired engineering company, they didn't want to hear what neighbors had to say. The meeting was held electronically, so they didn't have to face us in person, and over 100 people signed on and watched the meeting and participated. They may have performed all the requirements on your punch list. Just have another minute?
Yes, so just.
Uh, for another minute, but they had a limited time schedule, and they left all the questions for the end. This was by design. You could tell by their comments that they thought they already had this one in the bag. The developers paid a lot of money and is counting on their hired firm to get, use their connections with the county to get things done. Close by on Stone River Road, there's an extended stay hotel. There are many semi-permanent and permanent residents in this location, and it's the closest thing that we have to a apartment building. If you look at the sheriff, uh, dispatch, they've been there over 40 times this year for drugs, larceny, assault, and the list goes on and on. There's three sex offenders that live in that apartment, in that, in that hotel right now. So the designated use for this property was to support the Terra community, not add more residents to our community. And we want residents that are willing to pay their fair share to maintain Terra Boulevard and other things that are there. Why change something that's worked for us and the more than 4,000 residents of Terra? Thanks again.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much. All right, the next speaker I have is Michael Rafino. Rafino?
You got it right. My name is Mike Rafino, I'm a resident of Manatee County, uh, I live in Parish, I am the.
And you've been sworn?
Excuse me?
And you've been sworn?
Yes, I have been sworn, yes.
All right, all right, good.
I am the managing partner of Micron Development, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Micron Investments. We've owned this property since 2006. We were going to develop it in 2008. We had a, uh, building of plans already approved, and the economy just went in the toilet, so we stopped the development. We have sat on this property, we have been, have, have been approached by Topgolf, we've been approached by, uh, a mobile home developer, we've been approached by a go-kart company. We've turned them all down. They don't fit in that community, but I believe that this is the best and highest use for the property that's there now. And the reason for that is, the commercial side of this, when they built the two hotels to the east of the property, they cut us off from the commercial side of the, of the development. So we have no other, other way to develop it anymore. And I don't want to bring in a mobile home park, I don't want to bring in a Topgolf, I want to bring in something that's compatible to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sally Shuford. That's the last one I have that's signed up, and then we'll open it up to anybody else who hasn't had an opportunity to, to speak, so.
Greetings to the commission. My name is Sally Shuford. I have been sworn. I live at 7008 Chickasaw Bayou, and that's in Terra. I've been a resident of Manatee County for well over 75 years. I attended all the schools here and graduated from Manatee County High School. I learned to swim in the Braden River there at Marshall's Landing. Uh, I, as a teenager, rode horseback down State Road 70. I climbed the, with my friends climbed the fire tower there on 70, and from that vantage point up at the top, I remember looking out and seeing nothing but greenery. To say I've seen changes in Manatee County is certainly an understatement. Surely no one would ride horseback on State Road 70 today. My husband and I moved from Bradenton into Terra 25 years ago. We appreciated the small-town flavor of that community. Your current building restrictions are key to maintaining the ambience that is so important to me. Today, our roads there in Terra and our sidewalks are used by walkers, bicyclers, golf cart drivers, as well as automobiles. Over time, it's become more and more less safe. As you've heard and as you know, I'm sure, the intersection there at State Road 70 in Terra Boulevard is one of the most dangerous in Manatee County. The dense, the occupancy being proposed will surely impact this intersection drastically. I am very much opposed to the changes that are being proposed that increase density and allow building heights that alter our community atmosphere. I very strongly oppose the dangerous impact that may result to our rolled roads and intersection, and I urge you to not deny the changes that are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we've gone through the folks who have signed up, and, um, as I said, I would open it up to anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak to this application. So if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application, please do so now. Okay, seeing no one else come, oh, you just got in on, under the wire. So you have been sworn though, right?
I have been sworn.
Okay, all right, very good. If you would, state your name, county of residence that you've been sworn, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Sarah Rowe, I live in Manatee County. I've owned since '05, and I've lived here since '07. I live in Terra in the Preserve, and I've watched what has happened with Terra Boulevard since I've lived here. I want to speak to the traffic, I want to speak to the water, or, I'm sorry, I have a little list here. Anyway, so since I've been here, Terra Boulevard has cut off the left-hand turn when you first pull into turn in where the Goodwill Bookstore is. They put cement because we're issues, and that was probably in 2007 or 2008, so now you can't make that left. So then there's, um, a traffic light that wasn't there, so that's been put in, in these years. And now, we have all sorts of walkways, we have traffic, um, humps, for lack of a better word. We now have flashing stop signs, and before that, we have signs telling us that there's going to be stops, flashing stop signs before the bumps. We have signs telling us at the bump, at the bump, there's a sign. I'm like, am I in the metropolitan area in the northeast, where am I? It was park-like when I moved here. The only signs we had were maybe stop signs and speed limit signs. And it's all because of the traffic and people having issues driving on Terra Boulevard. That's without this apartment building. So I strongly urge you to deny it. The other thing that came to my mind, we were all talking about traffic, so, um, and I guess I understand that Goodwill Bookstore would be knocked down, I'm not sure if that would be part of it, and that frightens me because there's a lot of old people in Florida, and there's a lot of old people in Terra, and we actually read. So, we actually read books. So to lose that is, it's actually a little gem there, and I realize it creates traffic for people to come to go there. That's different from going into Publix, there's a different entrance, but it's an asset to our community, I believe. And then I was thinking about how people, if they, if they do, if, if this apartment building passes, which will make me cry, um, people will find all different way, the people who live there and have to go to work will find all different ways, there's all the different roads that go out to 70, so then there'll be more traffic going through by the gas station, going out, the Publix entrance off of 70, they'll go out that way, they'll go out, um, Terra Boulevard to 70, so that's going to create even more traffic. And then the storm drain runoff issue, uh, I was told that when something was put in, I'm sorry, I'm not remembering what it was, it was put in in Terra, the drains were supposed to go to State Road 70 drains to get rid of the runoff, and that didn't happen, and that's part of why there's flooding. So I oppose this on, I just think this is egregious, and I have sent emails to the commissioners, commissioners? Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Anyone at all? All right, seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we'll open it up to the commissioners. Are there any specific questions that we have of the applicant or of staff? I have a couple, if, if you all don't have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, is there anybody here for anything other than Terra? Because you're not going to be heard between now and lunch break. Just, just one person?
To Mr. Bedford's point, if you want to go ahead and go to lunch, we're not going to get to the next one unless you want to see the outcome of this one.
All right, fine. It looks like the afternoon's going to be pretty fast then, great.
All right. Mr. Rutledge, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, I, I'm a bit confused because I took from Mr. Rudisell's comments that there were other projects in Terra that were of commercial nature besides this node at the front, and there were some corollary heights, and so I'm just curious, um, what, what other commercial structures are inside the Terra and not on the facing 70 road, if there are any? Anybody know that?
Mr., yeah, Mr. Rudisell, if you would, please.
Shouldn't, shouldn't that be in his rebuttal, or, or?
Oh, we're, we're, no, we're asking questions now, so.
Okay.
Mr. Rudisell, um, you provided, uh, information related to the, um, presentation that included, uh, I think you described them as multifamily. Uh, I think Mr. Rutledge's question is, are those rental communities, are those, uh, what are they?
What other than single-family homes are in the Terra D R I that aren't forward-facing onto 70 or the main entrance there?
So are you talking, because there, some of the commercial uses are not along 70, or, or, so you asking about that, or are you asking about, other than single-family or residential, what exists within the residential portion of Terra?
The D R I, that is Terra?
Correct.
What products are in there besides single-family residential?
Uh, so there is multifamily, two-story and three-story multifamily, um, that is mixed in with the, in the residential area, okay? In the commercial portion, which is that front quadrant, which is where this project is, um, there are, I believe, three hotels, there's a gas station, a bank, there's a public shopping center.
But they're not scattered, uh, geographically away from that node at the entrance?
Maybe we could pull up an aerial, that, that might help. They're all, they're not all.
Yeah, I understand, but they're, they're not disconnected from the hub that faces 70, that's my point.
Correct, correct, it's all part of that, that quadrant of the project.
Okay.
Right.
And there's nothing then else in Terra in the D R I that's four stories?
No, no, there's no four stories.
And how have you addressed the easement? And I know we did the, the roadhouse next to the easement with the power company. Are you engaging with the power company easement property?
The easement runs across the project site.
Right.
Um, and that easement area is being avoided as part of the development. So there's, I think the setback on the eastern boundary is like 130 feet or something like that, so it's, it's just being left open.
Okay, so it's not becoming a parking lot? We converted ours to a parking lot, so we use it under the, no use of that property.
There's no parking within that area.
And is this piece of property part of the association that's been discussed kind of loosely as the Terra Association? Do they have a fee obligation to the Terra Association, Master Association?
Not that I, oh, you, okay, I'll let.
Uh, please, you have to be on, on the record.
Uh, yes, we do. We pay annually a fee to the commercial association. We are not part of the Terra Foundation. The commercial apostle is totally separate from the residential. Thank you.
If you could state your name for the, for the clerk?
I'm Mike Rafino, and, uh, I'm managing partner of, uh, I forgot the name of the company.
Micron.
Of Micron.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a question. The P S P that's been discussed, isn't that the next step in this whole process?
Well, this is an existing G D P.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll actually skip that step, we'll go directly to a final site plan from here. That's why there's no P S P.
Okay, all right, I didn't understand that, okay. And just to reiterate, oop.
P, the P S P and F S P go together.
Okay.
That's the next step.
All right, and just to reiterate the traffic concerns, you did state that there is an equivalency between what would be allowed with a commercial and these 196 multifamily units, correct?
Hundred, hundred.
So we're not really generating additional traffic to what could happen currently as, as is, correct?
That's correct, it's 156 units, we.
I'm sorry.
That is, there's a land use equivalency matrix that is built into the development order already, that has been reviewed by the county and approved, that allows for that conversion as being trip-neutral to the overall project.
It, you said it's been reviewed by the county, isn't that a state document also? The D R I?
Uh, yes, so the D R I would have been reviewed by the state as well.
Okay. That, is the, the equivalency matrix, is that in the D R I, or is that in the?
I, I believe it is in both development orders.
All right, thank you. All right.
So, and, and this would typically follow the 1.9 parking space, so you're going to have 296 parking spaces to meet the?
I, I don't know, the county has, uh, I think some flexibility.
Well, if it's 1.9 per, per unit, it's 157 units.
Uh, Manatee County has a mechanism by which the parking can be adjusted, so it would be if the, if the applicant intended to do something different, so they would have to make a statement related to their intent.
The standard is 1.8 for unit, and they don't have any specific approvals, you know, they have to comply with it.
Isn't the?
The standards or the deviation that allow to have 10% more or less a ton of final site plan, preliminary site plan?
So if, if it was four stories, was reduced to one level less, it drops it by about 70, 70-some cars is my kind of calculation. So I, I guess my question is, the difference between building a project that's three stories versus four stories or five stories? between building a project that's three stories versus four stories or five stories is kind of economic and intensity-driven. And I know we like to build intense where we have commercial, but it's just...
Is that a question?
I'm just trying, I'm trying to sort through the delta of what you can do as far as density. So...
Yeah. Let's try to get to deliberation. I have some thoughts on it, too, that I'd like to bounce off some of the other commissioners, too. So is there, are there any other questions, additional questions for staff or for the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if it's going to be in staff summation or in staff questions, but, you know, Mr. Leid could point out the density calculations incorrect. Someone needs to address that. So, you're the applicant or the staff?
Okay.
That's what I meant to say.
Rosina Leibert, staff, and I have been sworn. With the DRIs, the density is not calculated parcel by parcel related to the parcels in the property appriser. When you have the DRI, you take, if there is different future land use categories, you calculate what is the maximum entitlements that can give the different future land use categories. If you have, for example, UF3, the maximum is three. If you have RES6, the maximum is six. And you calculate what is the maximum potential. And after that, the applicant provide, what is their proposal. Could be, the maximum potential could be less. In this case, the maximum potential, I don't have the number exactly, but I think the maximum potential is, yeah, is, the planner have more than 7,000. We calculate ROR and MU and RES6. But this is approved for 2,700, more or less. It's way below to the maximum potential. However, after that, when the GDP is approved and the DRI is approved, the ordinance established some parcels that, for example, the Goodwood parcel, the parcel 3C, 3B, and establish the entitlements for each particular parcel. And that parcel can have entitlements that could be more of the density for the future land use category in which this parcel is allocated. It's not taking exactly like when you have a specific parcel development only for 100 units. It's allocated for the overall, okay? And for example, there are parcels already in the plan that has been approved with 16 dwelling units per acre, you know?
Pardon me, I, this is at least in part quasi-judicial proceeding.
Yeah.
So there's evidence, and so I have to object.
Your objection is noted?
I'm objecting that she's not qualified to give a legal answer to that issue. She was just asked, what she gave is just an incorrect statement of the law.
Yeah.
As it's quasi-judicial, we can't have any testimony that's not on the record. So
your objection is acknowledged. So, Ms. Leid, are the information you expressed, that is information that's on MAP H. Is that correct?
The information that I provided is the way that we calculate all the DRIs within the Manatee County. It's not parcel from the property appriser. It's the parcel for each, the parcels that are listed with entitlements with the DRI.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. All right.
And I had one more question for staff.
Yes, ma'am.
So the process that the applicant's pursuing now of having amendments to the MAP H and amendments to the GDP without a preliminary site plan today, is that usual, or is this very unusual?
It says you have the DRI with associated GDP. And if the applicant is asking to have any specific approvals included right now, and after that, they come back with a preliminary site plan and final site plan that is administratively approved. This is the common practice to have the DRI and associated GDP.
I have just one more question when I get to that.
It's a common practice, and it's for all the DRIs is in that way.
There's one more minute here. I just have to look at the stipulation here. Okay, regarding building height in the proposed ordinance, it's only ordinance, there's a notation to Exhibit E, dimensional chart, that reads G, the height of Option A, multifamily development on the Goodwill parcel. Parcels 3V and 3Z is limited to four stories, 50 feet, subject to the building high compatibility standards contained in Section 401.5 ODC. Now, is that common practice in the county to defer that review to later in the development process?
It's a common practice is to put the standards that's going to govern the subsequent preliminary site plan, final site plan. And also, all the standards that are in the Land Development Code for the PDR, for the entranceway, or any overlays have to be in compliance with that, the preliminary site plan and the future final site plan.
Okay, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Bedford?
The number of units is determined by MAP H. MAP H exists, and right now it's calling out for 29 multifamily on the Goodwill, 91 on 3V, 36 on 3Z. If you add them up, you get 156. So that's where the 156 comes from. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So that's where they come from.
Of the...
That's what's approved right now.
And I would like to clarify...
This didn't come from a calculation of collective...
No. So that's my point.
Yeah, yeah. And I would like to clarify that. Sorry.
Can't all talk over each other.
Sorry. I apologize.
So right now, there's a MAP H approved on those pieces, and they have development on there. And it's the number of units. That's what I'm saying.
All right. Ms. Leidar? Yes.
The reason is common because this is all the DRI that has only PDR and PDC. When they do the land equivalency matrix, they allow the conversion to commercial from residential. But PDC doesn't allow residential uses. For this reason, in order to accommodate what is allowed with the approved land equivalency matrix, we need to switch to PDMU because the applicant is proposing two options: or maintain the commercial site, or do this conversion with 156 units.
Okay, thank you. So...
Do you know what that means?
Yes, sir. Thanks.
All right. Draw it for me.
All right. With that, I'd like to go to staff closing comments. Is there anything additional? All right, staff is waiving closing comments. And again, we're going to have the applicant's closing comments rebuttal, no additional testimony, and we'll close it for deliberation. So Mr. Rudisell, if you would, closing comments and rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief because I know I'm the only thing standing between everyone and going to eat lunch today. I'm going to start by, to support Rosina's comments regarding the application of the Conference of Plan Consistency. This is from Section 400.6 I of the Land Development Code. And it talks about how density is measured when you have a planned development project with multiple future land use categories. Density and intensity is measured by the overall site at the, for your gross density and your intensity calculations. And then when you get to net density, they look at it on a parcel by parcel basis. Terra is a beautiful development. But in terms of the 35 feet, it is not unique because the entire county standard was 35 feet for a long time. And up until just a few years ago, actually, it was 35 feet. And so that was a conscious decision by the county to increase the ability to put height. They were looking at the way the county was building out, and they said, we're going to allow height. And when they did that, they put in a height compatibility standard into the code that says, when you want to have additional height, you provide additional setbacks. And so if you look at the standard and what would be required here, to go to four stories, that setback would be 45 feet. We are significantly beyond that setback. And that is the standard for mitigating the potential for height incompatibility. The other thing that was noted a couple of times, even though the standard was 35 feet supposedly, there are several existing buildings within this project that exceed 35 feet. The building directly to our east, which abuts the same residential that this site does, is 43 feet in height. So when you're looking at a delta in the ask, that is, we're asking for a maximum 50 feet, that's a difference of seven feet from what is existing literally just to the east of the site. We do think that we have mitigated that through the setbacks. It is a very significant setback on the site, and we're asking for your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Very good. All right, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, thoughts. I'll start. One of the things I tend to say is, I defer or default to rights associated with the property. And this one's a little bit different. We have a DRI that has a long history that has established rights in it. I would argue that the traffic issue is already addressed in the DRI, and those rights have been established through that document. The counter to that, though, is I'm having difficulty with the increased height. That's the thing that is not in the DRI currently, and we're being asked to change the rights associated. So I don't know. Are there any other thoughts related to that?
I think that if you look at urban planning as a model, this is where you want to put more density, I mean intellectually. And if they have rights that, thank you, Commissioner, sharing that intellect with me, that have the rights for these 157 units, I'm okay with that. I think the challenge is to say, to make it more developable, because I've been on the development side, I'd rather go four stories than do it and try and figure it out in three. I'm not sure you, that's a fair ask. That's the only thing I can say. Don't disagree, they can do it. If they come back and do it in three stories, they're like the hotels next door. I don't love those hotels there. I go to the Vietnamese restaurant there all the time, and I hate the traffic over there. I mean, I just hate to go there. But I don't know that I can revoke someone's rights. And I don't find it incompatible, except the height doesn't match. And I think on that, I'm going to have to vote against it and have them rethink whether they can do it in three stories or four.
And also to amend my statement, or not amend, to add to it, I'm okay with the density. I think there's a clear calculation, a clear history. Everything seems to be consistent with, with the exception of the height, and that's where I struggle. If they could do the same number of units in the, you know, yeah, lower building, that would be okay. I understand the difficulty is, whenever you do something like this, the parking becomes something that drives the development. So, but generally, if this were someplace else in a greenfield, I would have no problem with it. But the fact that it's in a mature community is the thing that is causing some consternation. So, any other thoughts?
I just think the other thing is, there's a capture rate. In other words, when you put that many people close to their services, they could walk to McDonald's, or they can go over to the restaurant, or go to Publix, they don't get in their car as much. And I think, you know, I've got a 96-year-old mother-in-law that lives with me. She can't walk far, but she could walk certain places. And if they could walk those conveniences, they don't have a car, don't want a car. So I see the value of having some residential by this commercial node. But again, I just, I can't get over making that exception for the height, because I think that's the one thing that by code, they don't have. And I don't think I have to say they should have it. I'm not sure.
All right. Mr. Smock, yes?
Trying to formulate, this is the best way I can. The idea of not doing something because it's never been done before isn't an argument for me. I think, you know, we've established the fact that four-story threshold in Manatee County has become an acceptable standard. And in a commercial zone is the most ideal place to try implementing it. By going four stories, it allows them a narrower footprint to allow, to give them the parking, the ability to put the spaces in that they need to be able to service the lots or the homes that have been approved. Otherwise, you know, we're just going to be sprawling more and taking more green space to provide parking by forcing them into a three-story buildings throughout.
Right. And I would agree with that also, that there shouldn't, you know, the height shouldn't necessarily have an artificial constraint. But again, I come back to the fact that there's a, there's a history of rights associated with this particular parcel. Like I said, if it were someplace else, I wouldn't have any issue. But it's been established, you know, if this were at the very beginning of the DRI, I would say, you know, eight feet, or eight stories would be, you know, maybe something adjacent to I75 or near State Road 70 might be appropriate. But that's not where we're at. We're around the last parcel, not the first one.
Fortunately here in Manatee County, there's very few new DRIs being developed. I mean, everything's already kind of existing. So we're forcing things into existing areas.
All right, I'm going to shut up and, Mr. Bedford.
Mr. Chairman, I'll argue in favor of the height because we're talking about seven feet. If we separate the number of stories, I don't care if it's 1,000 stories. How high is it? So the adjacent, apparently the hotel to the east or motel, whatever it is, is 43 feet high, so I've been told. This one is apparently 50 feet. And there are conditions in the Land Development Code, the comp plan, for increased setbacks, give you increased heights. And this setback is 200 feet from the adjacent closest house or something. So I'm looking at seven feet, which is, you know, a door frame, which is 6'8". And I don't know that at 200 feet, seven feet is going to change my worldview of that. So...
All right. I'm sorry.
I agree with that, too. I think the setbacks are substantial. I think we have to start looking at going vertical versus horizontal in our development. I think its location on 70 is good. I just think it's probably going to be a better product by going up a story than trying to spread it out, get the same number of units.
When we talk about densification, I mean, you know, you want to do planning. The Publix is there, the gas station's there, the infrastructure's there, the water's there, the sewers there, the cops are there, police are there, school's there. Everything is there. And so you start, where would you put those extra 40 or 50 apartments or whatever? Out east, you know? We're going to be moving development boundary line. We're just picking 50 units up and shoving them out to Vernon Bethany Road. Or do we do it here? You know, so I'm leaning towards doing it here.
Any other thoughts?
My computer's not working, so we'll have to do a verbal...
Get out.
But I think height-wise is a problem with it, being an existing neighborhood. So I will vote for it.
All right. Ms. Schenk, we've got two items. We have to take Item 7. They have to be done separately, correct?
Correct.
All right.
So the ordinary agenda is number seven is the ordinance 2371, Terra DRI 11 would be the first consideration.
And if, are they, is Item 7, I'm sorry, Item 8 dependent on Item 7?
Well, they're both quasi-judicial, so I think we have to vote on both of them.
Okay.
No, because, I'm sorry. I think his point is, if 7 fails, is 8 an issue?
The quasi-issue, we have to vote on both.
Okay. That could get unusual, but we'll see what happens. All right. So with that, we'll open it up for a motion. So, Mr. Smock, you have a motion to approve?
Yes.
And Ms. Kaba, you seconded the motion to approve? Okay. All right, with that, we're going to call a voice vote. We can also use this, but I don't know if it'll work since Mr. Delez's line. So all those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
And those in favor of the motion for denial?
Aye.
Like, sign aye. So it's 3-3.
That's why we asked about number eight, right?
I think we have a recommendation, but we need votes on both of them.
All right. With that, we'll go to item number eight.
Don't anybody switch.
I think you need to move.
I'll flop, right? Put it right in the sanity.
All right. With that, if we could, let's go to, oops, I'm sorry. I hit the wrong thing. Let's go to item number eight. So, item number eight, we have, we don't have anything. I'll ask for a motion, a voice motion, item number eight.
I'll move to approve item number eight. It's going to be a 3-3 again.
We have a motion by Mr. Bedford. We have a motion by Mr. Bedford, a second by Mr. Smock. Again, we'll call by voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
All right, so 3-3. So, all right. A lot of, a lot of discussion for very little.
Solutions.
As this is the record, there's no recommendation, neither one.
Yeah.
It just goes, the report is set up with all record.
Well, hopefully our discussion has helped the Board of County Commissioners understand. So with that, we're going to call lunch. Let's say be back by 2:00.
Which is to adopt Resolution B-24-001, the tentative mileage rates for fiscal year '23 and '24. And that motion was seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We've held public comment, there's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. If we could pull up the second motion, which is Motion 2, Move to Adopt Resolution B-24-002, which is the tentative budget for fiscal year '23-'24, also includes unincorporated municipal service taxing district, taxing unit, I apologize, and the Palm Air Municipal Taxing Unit. We have a motion to approve that item by Commissioner Satcher. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We've held public comment, and there's no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, the second motion passes unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Now we'll pull up the third motion. We'll call it Motion 3. Move to Adopt Resolution B-24-003, which adopts the tentative budget for fiscal year '23-'24 for all identified Manatee County Dependence Special Districts. Entertaining motions, Commissioner Satcher has made a motion to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Turner. We've held public comment, and there's no one on the board for discussion, so we'll cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of 7 to 0. Madam CFO?
Yes. At this point, I have to place the C announcement as per TRIM, if I may, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
The aggregate mileage rate for fiscal year '23-'24 for Manatee County is 6.6880 mils, and the change from the rollback aggregate mileage rate is 6.3271 mils. For the operating mileage is hereby determined to be a positive 5.7%. At this point, this concludes our public hearing. What is next in tourney? We move into the September 19 public hearing at 6:00 PM on the same location. The next step is for us to advertise on the newspaper, Bradenton Herald, on September 14. Unfortunately, we cannot, it's not allowed by TRIM to be able to publish it in our website, because we are a county that is higher than 160,000 population. So it will be placed in there. This is the notice of proposed tax increase. It's not a tax increase, it's just that because of our taxable values have increased, the offset is a tax increase. In the September 19, like I had explained, we were going to talk more in depth about the capital improvement plan, a little bit about the list of projects and the highlights of the projects of the CIP in '24-'28, as well as where are the funding sources, the main drivers of our budget as of today, and how does that affect the CIP plan for those that do our funding, the CIP? And then finally, talk about the future spending plan based on the CIP plan that we have at $3.5 billion. And then finally, we adopt the FY '24 budget, only to start all over in October again. And this completes our presentation. Thank you so much, Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. County Attorney, anything further?
No, sir.
Mr. Bishop? Commissioners, any new business? All right, thank you, ma'am, we're adjourned.
So my name's Kevin Van Austin-Bridge. I want to welcome everyone here. In Manatee County, we have a habit, and we do, before we start every meeting, is we like to honor God, and we also like to honor this, the greatest nation in the history of the world. So I'm going to bring forward Commissioner Jason Bearden, he's going to lead us in prayer. He's also a Marine Corps veteran, combat veteran, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, if you're able, please stand.
What a beautiful morning it is here in Manatee County. And to top it off, an amazing project that's been a long awaited to be completed here. So everybody bow their heads. Father God, thank you, Lord. Thank you for blessing us to live in the greatest country in the world, and the best state in the nation, and in the best county in the state. We thank you, Father, for the things that you have set before us, and we thank you, Lord, for the things that you're doing here in Manatee County. Father, thank you, Lord, for the wisdom that you give us as we continue to be guided by you and your direction to prepare Manatee County for the future. Lord, we continue to ask that you be with us, that you guide us and lead us into prosperity in this land. And we give you all the glory and the praise for it all, in Jesus mighty name, and we all said, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir, thank you. Apparently, this is quite the event. We have air cover. But I want to welcome everybody here today. Thank you for joining us. We tried to do it as early as we could, to keep it as cool as we could, but it's Florida in August, so it doesn't really matter. We could have held this at 4:00 in the morning, you'd sweat eventually anyway. But I do want to talk real quick, before we get, you know, into our speakers, just about the foresight that was required for this project. As we continue to grow, this county is expanding eastward. We need more east and west connectors and arteries, and we need more abilities to move not just our residents, but even EMS and transit and everybody. You know, you end up sitting in line and traffic, trying to get to work, and it starts consuming more and more of your day. We talk about quality of life, and the question is, you know, how much time do people want to spend sitting in traffic, trying to get to work and trying to get home, versus how much time do they actually want to spend with their kids? Do you want to do homework with your kids at the house, or from the backseat of the car? And so this is not just a safety issue, not just a convenience issue, but overall, it's quality of life. So by the time we're done, we'll be well over $100 million into this project. It's going to ultimately run from the Beach House Restaurant in Bradenton Beach, all the way out essentially to Hunzaiters at 675. And it will dramatically relieve the traffic on State Road 64 and State Road 70. And to that effect, we've reached out to the state for help with funding. Senator Boyd, Representative Robinson and Gregory, and Governor DeSantis have each year contributed funding to this project, because they see the foresight, they see that it's going to relieve state roads, and that it's a wiser investment for them to help us build this than it is for them to continue to add lanes to existing arterials. So, at any rate, we do want to do some recognitions and some thank yous here. Woodruff &amp; Sons, Donnie Woodruff is back there somewhere, there he is, he's sitting down, otherwise you'd be able to see him easily. But a big thank you to Woodruff &amp; Sons. HDR Engineering as well, where are you? Where is HDR Engineering? They didn't make it, we don't have to clap for them then. AECOM, A-E-C-O-M, AECOM, are you all here? They are, excellent. Thank you, sir. Zep Construction, is Zep Construction here today? All right, we'll hold your applause. FDOT, we should applaud for them regardless, because if you don't, they get a spur up their saddle, you know, and, there we go. It's always good to have a positive relationship with FDOT. Governor Ron DeSantis and the Florida Legislature, we give them a big round of applause. And of course, that includes Representatives Gregory and Robinson, Senator Jim Boyd, and then going further back, Senator Bill Galvano. And then, of course, let's not forget the hard-working staff, Manatee County Public Works, Charlie Bishop, Chad Butzo, Clark Davis, Scott May, all those guys, all those engineers, planners, project managers, everybody with Manatee County. Okay. Then we're going to start with the ribbon cutting. So who would you like up here for a ribbon cutting?
Everyone involved?
Everyone involved. Everybody that I read off, including Woodruff, Zep Construction, FDOT, Governor DeSantis, please come forward. All the county commissioners, please come forward. Chad, and your folks, come forward. Let's get everybody up here that was involved in this, please, for the ribbon cutting.
Thank you all for coming out. I mean, 44th, as the chairman said, is critically important to the growth of Manatee County as we move forward. And having this bridge is effectively the second and the last step, and really seeing the vision that other commissioners and boards and staff saw well before any of our time here. So, you know, once we get this, and we can get a real reliever off of State Road 64, State Road 70, to help make your commute a little bit better, make Manatee County a little less congested, it's going to be an amazing opportunity for you and for your families. So I just want to thank everyone who worked so hard in making this happen, getting this done before the school year, getting this done for all of you and your commutes. It's exciting, I can't wait to drive across it, it's going to make my life a lot easier, I'm sure it's going to make all of your lives a lot easier. So thank you for coming out here to cut the ribbon and have this second-to-last piece of 44th come to fruition for all of us. Thank you very much.
Introduce James for the last couple of words.
And I'm introducing the person who dressed appropriately for the heat, District 1 Commissioner James Satcher.
Hop on the bus.
Oh, yeah? All right. Apparently, when we're done, we'll hop on the bus, I'm told by the chairman. You know, bridges, Americans, and in specific, and then humans in general, when we see two things and you can't connect them, they want to make a way. And so I'm excited to see this, that when you, you know, the amount of trip and time that it takes to get from one side of the county to the other, this is going to make a difference. And we're not stopping here, you know, going all the way out, we're going to go over I-75, go into Maica, the north, we're going to make a north-south on the east side of the county, I believe, as well, to keep people moving, get us where we want to go, so that we can do what we want to do. So thank you all so much for being here.
All right, let's hop on the MCAT and take the Virgin Voyage, huh? It was a joint effort with FDOT. They know that they can't continue to add lanes to State Road 70 and State Road 64 forever, and so adding an additional road is the best thing that they can do to try to relieve traffic on their existing infrastructure. So they've added tens of millions of dollars every year through appropriations through the legislature, signed off by Governor DeSantis, of course, and by Governor Scott before him, sort of helping this project along. But ultimately, Manatee County is who spearheaded the project from the beginning, and who has driven the project all the way, almost across the finish line. We're not across the interstate quite yet, but that's really the last big piece. And it involved DEP and all these different agencies to, of course, cross the Braden River, FDOT to help us get across the interstate, and then landowners. There are a lot of, you know, private landowners along the way, plus SMR, which is, you know, Schroeder Manatee Ranch, which is Lakewood Ranch, building their piece. Ultimately, Medallion Homes, building the last piece at the end. So there are an awful lot of partners involved in this. It is, so this project, to give credit where credit's due, was started by previous boards. You know, our role as commissioners, and my role as chair, is to ensure that these projects that have been started are seen through and are seen to completion. This isn't quite to completion, but this is a huge piece of the puzzle that was put together, which is this bridge being constructed, and now connecting us all the way to, seeing you from the Beach House Restaurant to the interstate at this point. Soon enough, you'll be over the interstate, and on the other side, it's be over the interstate, and on the other side, it's mostly finished as well. So everybody sort of has to take the baton and carry it as far as they can during their tenure. And I think that we have appropriately done that. Our board, in looking to expand beyond this major arterial, we have looked at lots of other county roads that need either capacity improvements or need to be built. You know, Lena Road, it deadens off of 64, it deadens off of 70 as well. It's a half a mile off the interstate. That's the interstate reliever. So we're going to spend $44 million connecting Lena Road so that you can get from 70 to 64 without jumping on the interstate. And that's going to help relieve congestion, relieve traffic along the way. It's a great example. We're going to start breaking ground on upper Manatee River roads sooner than later to four-lane that. And West Bradenton, 75th Street, there's a bottleneck there, and that's going to be four-laned all the way to Manatee Avenue. Total, $720 million in county roads. So it has been our top priority is road construction and getting people out of traffic. I would like them to know that we are planning for the future, and that's with roads, number one, which, of course, it takes a long time. You have to plant the tree eventually. So we're planting quite a few trees. You know, roads, obviously, would be number one. But we're also, we're working on sidewalks, we're expanding our water and sewer, you know, potable water and sewer lines. We're looking to expand the actual wastewater systems themselves, the treatment plants themselves. We're even planning to, working on the homeless problem. Right now, that's a top initiative for us. So we're just, we're planning for the future, we're planning for growth. We are. We're trying to trim fat, and we're trying to reallocate monies that maybe could be better spent on something that's a higher priority for the county. Roads, sidewalks, all these things that I just mentioned, all these infrastructure projects that I just mentioned, that we're going to need going into the future. Sure. I would say that it's going to cut down on traffic on 64 and 70. It's going to make those roads safer. It's going to enable you a more free-flowing experience on the road trying to get east to west. It's going to limit the amount of time that you're sitting in traffic, and hopefully, it's going to improve our ability for public safety to move our first responders east and west through this county with less congestion and get them where they need to go quicker.
If you're looking into a trade, this right here, this is the king of all trades. We lay pipe, we fix water lines, we operate heavy equipment, we drive heavy machinery, masonry work, concrete work, asphalt work, we do it all. This right here is the king of blue-collar work. A water distribution maintenance technician, we maintain the water system. We provide a very vital source, being water, to all of our customers and residents in Manatee County.
If you enjoy getting dirty, if you enjoy working hard, if you enjoy fixing things and repairing things and maintaining things, this is a great job for somebody who needs to stay busy.
When you pull up on the job and there's water down the street, there's road missing, the bigger and bad of the job, the more I want it. The big line breaks, there's nothing that beats it.
This job takes grit, it takes determination, and it takes a wanting, a desire to work hard.
You can't be afraid to get dirty. You've got to be ready for it. You've got to welcome it. And it's something that we don't just mind. We look forward to it.
Hi, my name is Kyle with Manatee County Utilities. Come work with me as a water maintenance technician and get ready to get dirty.
All right, going to call the meeting back to order. I believe we're on item number nine. Ms. Leidar, can you read item nine into the record, please?
Number nine, CL 2207, BTC redevelopment, Bayside Holding LLC is a quasi-youth case, and the case manager is Mr. Chris Kleppert. It is an ordinance of the Board of County Commission of Manatee County to amend the Manatee County Land Development Code related to the zoning with the unincorporated area provided for the rezon of more or less 6.72 acres generally located at the southeast corner of El Conquistador Parkway and Bay Club Drive, uncommonly known 4511 Bay Club Drive, Bradenton Front, RSF3 residential single-family, three dwelling units per acre, RFS3 slash CHH residential single-family, three units per acre coastal high hazard, RSF 4.5 residential single-family, 4.5 dwelling units per acre, and RFS 4.5 CHH residential single-family, 4.5 coastal high hazard to the RMF 16 dash L residential multifamily, 16 dwelling units per acre, zoning district retaining the coastal high hazard overlay district.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I just realized something.
You never asked if we had...
Ex parte communications, so...
In retrospect, we haven't.
Yeah.
I've had them all.
So, just for the record, for the clerk's office, have there been any ex parte communications regarding item number three, PDR 2304, PRIN-Z, PRIN-P?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. None disclosed. Item number four, Z 2309 dash 4920, Jim Davis Road rezon?
No, sir.
Okay, none disclosed. Item number six, Creekside Village, PDR 2309, PRIN-P?
None.
Yes, sir.
None, okay. And then, item number eight, PDR, PDR PC PM, PDMU 9603, PRIN-Z, PRIN-G, R 13?
Yes, sir.
And item number... Wait, did I miss one? Seven, yes, seven, ordinance 2371, formerly known as 2335 TERRA DRI.
No.
Okay, hearing none disclosed, how about this application? Have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
All right. Hearing none disclosed, Mr. Black?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Marty Black. I'm a resident of Manatee County, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for taking the time this afternoon. We're going to try to make this as quick as possible. We were before you earlier this summer with a straight rezoning, which the Planning Commission did recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. After we filed our petition and as part of the discussion with the Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County has amended its zoning regulations to allow for limitations to be proposed or stipulated as part of that. That was not the case when we were before you and as part of our initial submission. We had described and discussed the intensity of the likely development to occur. As a result of that, we asked the County Commission to allow us to come back, amend our application, to place limitations on that. So that's why we're back before you this afternoon. I would ask that the record of the prior proceedings, just to take reference of that. I'm going to quickly go through a series of slides for the benefit of anyone who may be watching at home. Our application has been amended to limit the maximum residential development to four stories and to one story of parking. The prior application before the amendment, your codes would have allowed us to go to six stories plus additional stories of parking. So effectively, we've cut the development potential by one-third by reducing the overall height to four stories and limiting our ability to do parking to one story of understructure parking. And that's primarily because we're in the coastal high hazard area. We'll have to elevate the structure, so that's where we'll place the parking to cut down the amount of impervious area. The application itself is necessitated by the fact that the existing zoning is not consistent with your comprehensive plan. The zoning is not, as it stands today, one of the implementing districts for the RES 16 Future Land Use category. So this is a request to the RMF 16 Limited to be compliant with and consistent with your comprehensive plan. I would note that in the event, the current owners are actually the operators, and the applicant is the operators of the current club, so they're not developers. In the event that a subsequent developer exceeds three stories, they're going to have to meet the additional setbacks and step backs from the property lines per your regulations. So even if we go to the four stories, the buildings will have to be pulled in. We do anticipate that may happen, but we don't know. But I do want to highlight that as part of the record. The property itself, since 1989, has been in the Future Land Use category RES 16, and that is one of the implementing districts is the RMF 16. And again, as we indicated, we have proposed and amended our petition to formally limit the overall massing of the structures. I do want to add one series of additional items the Planning Commission was not able to hear. We did have an updated ALTA survey completed on the property. And if you can see where the two circles are, in addition to the access off of Bay Club Drive onto El Conquistador, this property also has an ingress egress easement that specifies at 24 feet that takes us across the adjoining IMG property to the south. And in addition, there is an overall blanket easement for access through their parking areas out to El Conquistador. So there will be the opportunity for two access points to this site in the future development petitions. The zoning itself is supported by a series of comprehensive plan policies. I do want to call to your attention that specifically policies in your section 2.2 of the Future Land Use element provide that high-density residential should be oriented toward collector and higher roadways, and obviously, El Conquistador meets that requirement. We have completed the staff review, and there are no outstanding issues. I would note that the existing tennis club is a private facility. There were restrictions on the property that expired a number of years ago, actually decades ago at this point. So it is no longer restricted as to use, and therefore, the reason for bringing forth this rezoning petition. Therefore, the facility is not part of any required levels of service for parks or recreational activities for the county. We did complete an analysis... We did complete an analysis, preliminary analysis of transportation impacts. And because of the existing number of courts, the clubhouse and its facilities, including the pro shop and the bar slash restaurant, if you'd like to call it that, retail food and drink that's included, the traffic impact analysis confirms that the projected change of traffic is de minimis. In fact, depending on the ultimate number of final units, it may be less or equal to the number of park trips that are generated by the existing use. I would note, if you've got a slide before you, some of the adjoining properties to the site are currently at three to four stories. So our limitation to four stories of residential with the maximum of one story of parking creates better opportunities for compatibility with the adjoining residents. And that's part of the reason, again, for our request to move to a limited rezoning opportunity. You do have a higher intensity and larger structures further up El Conquistador. But immediately to the west of this site, there are four-story condominiums. That's the picture to the right. Those are actually the properties that are on the bay and to the west of this site. I would indicate that table four point one of the future land use categories identifies in the land development code that RMF sixteen is an implementing zoning district. And therefore, in general terms and in specific terms to land use policies, we are consistent with your future land use categories and comprehensive plan. The higher intensities and surrounding zoning include P D M U, RMF nine, P D R, RSF three, and RMF six. I would note that the RSF three and the single-family districts that are in this area are also inconsistent with the future land use category. I think that was actually a surprise at the last hearing for some of the residents to hear that their zoning had been changed, excuse me, the future land use had been changed in nineteen eighty-nine and made their zoning inconsistent with the long-range plan. So our intent to amend this was to try to create some sense of compatibility without shocking the rest of the world any more than we needed to. I want to thank you for the time today. We'll be available for any questions and look forward to recommendation to the board. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? It's like a sequel to the original series, so, very good. All right, who do we have for staff? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chris Klepek, Development Services, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
The applicant has done a pretty good job with their presentation, so I'll just kind of go over a couple other things. As Mr. Black had stated, we did come here for Planning Commission back in June, as well as B O C C back in June as well. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. However, at the Board of County Commissioners, there was a lot of concern regarding compatibility with the adjacent single-family residences. So with that being said, they asked for continuance and opted for the standard limited zoning district of RMF sixteen L, which allows for us to, you still don't get to see a site plan, so it's not a site-controlled plan. However, it allows the applicant to proffer up stipulations that can help address compatibility. So with that being said, the applicant has proffered a stipulation to restrict the maximum building height allowed to four residential stories with one story for underbuilding parking. It's a general location. So we do have just some site data, so it's three parcels totaling 6.72 acres. It consists of RSF three and RSF four point five. Future land use category is R E S sixteen, residential sixteen dwelling units per acre. And it is also located within all of the coastal overlays. So you have the coastal planning overlay, coastal high hazard, coastal evacuation area, as well as the Sarasota Airport impact height overlay. And I will note that the height for Sarasota Airport, the impact is between three hundred and three hundred and fifty feet. So for all intents and purposes, for where we're at today, talking about building height, we're not gonna allow three hundred, three hundred foot tall building here. So they're good in terms of the airport impact height overlay. So just a little history of the site, so four point eleven acres of the site was developed into tennis courts back in the eighties. We had a little over an acre and a half get developed in tennis courts in twenty fifteen. And still, to this day, a little over one acre is vacant. And they are adjacent, the whole entire site is adjacent to both single-family and multifamily zoning districts. You can see to the south, the west, and the east, we have RSF three. And then, across the street, we have some RMF, some P D R, Plan Development Residential. And they are adjacent to RMF nine, or residential multifamily, nine dwelling units, and some RSF four point five. And over to the, I guess, to the east, as well as the northeast, is the IMG academies. And as you can see, we've got, surrounded by R E S sixteen to the north, to the east, and to the south. And to the west, we've got R E S nine. So as the applicant said, the request today is an appropriate request as the R E S sixteen does support the RMF sixteen zoning district. So it's an implementing zoning district within the future land use category of R E S sixteen. So for max density, the most that they can achieve on this site, sixteen dwelling units per gross acre. And they're not eligible for any incentives for mixed use or affordable housing, or mostly for affordable housing because of the coastal overlay. So they're capped at that sixteen dwelling units per gross acre. They will be required to provide at least thirty-five percent open space. The building height here in the RMF sixteen zoning district by right is allowed at six stories. However, as I stated before, the applicant has proffered up a stip to only limit it to four residential stories with one story for underbuilding parking. And with that, anything over three stories in height will require the four one point five, the building height compatibility, which is where you kind of start to see the birthday cake effect, where it kind of layers and you get additional setbacks of twenty feet for every story after three. And this is kind of a catch-22 because we always like to see a site-controlled plan. And so we see a lot of PSPs and GDPs, but we really see a lot of PSPs and we like that because, well, we can see what the setbacks are, what the buffers are. But we don't see that here with limited or with any standard zoning district. That all of that will be reviewed at time of final site plan. So things like that would include access and the building height compatibility, parking, all of the open space. And with that being said, it is, in the opinion of staff, that the proposed rezon from RSF three and four point five to RMF sixteen L can be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with the applicable provisions of the land development code. And I do have an extra slide if you guys have any questions on stories of how we calculate building height and stories. I have some additional information for that, too. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. All right, any questions for staff? Ms. Kibbe?
So it's four stories over parking, so is it essentially five-story building?
Yes and no. So this is, because it's in the coastal overlays, there's gonna be flood plains and compensation for that in terms of where their finished floor elevation starts, okay? And building height starts, in terms of stories, that building height starts at the finished floor elevation. And so I would assume that they're going to need to raise the structure. So with that being said, that's a good segue into how we kind of measure the stories. So the minimum residential story, I'm sorry, the minimum residential floor height is eight feet. Now, it can go up to a maximum of fourteen feet, but any story over that, or I'm sorry, any height over fourteen feet would be considered additional story. So say, for example, if you had a fifteen-foot-tall finished floor elevation to finished ceiling elevation, it would technically be considered two stories, okay? So with that being said, the residential portion could be anywhere between thirty-two and fifty-six feet, okay? And the ground floor can be anywhere up to twenty feet. So it gives us a range of technically between thirty-two and fifty-six feet, I'm sorry, fifty-two to seventy-six feet. Now, that, we don't know what the ground story's gonna be because we don't analyze that here today. It's just, I provided that as a worst-case scenario for us, so you can see what the worst-case scenario would be.
Okay, in the staff report, it says that the staff encouraged the applicant to provide a maximum of three stories over one. And the applicant didn't agree, but what was your thinking for encouraging the three stories over one?
During the initial Planning Commission, as well as the June fifteenth B O C C land use meeting, we had a lot of residents show up and they voiced a lot of concern for the compatibility adjacent to some of the neighbors. And a lot of those neighboring residences are between two and three stories. And so, you know, to help address compatibility with, and to look out for the neighbors, we recommended it. But of course, you know, it's just a recommendation, we, yeah.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bedford?
Minimum residential floor height of eight feet. That's not finished floor to finished floor. Because that would mean a six-foot ceiling. So you might need to wordsmith that a bit.
So in four oh one three, and when we talk about the Balkan dimensions, and I actually pulled the code reference as well and I printed it out, it is, it's measured from finished floor to finished ceiling height. Now, and I agree, that does not account for the in-between in terms of.
That's correct.
In terms of story, so.
So what you're telling, so these dimensions here of eight feet and fourteen feet are the clear height in the space, finished floor to finished ceiling.
That's correct.
That's what you're calling a story.
That's correct, that's how the code.
Take into account the structure.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? And just for clarification or information, this was properly noticed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to mention.
You're feeling alone?
Okay, all right, thank you. With that, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for public comments. I don't have any speaker signed up, but if anybody wishes to come forward and speak on this application, please do. And if you would, state your name, county of residence, and that you have been sworn.
Sure, Anita Eldridge. I am a Manatee County resident and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
You don't see many people there because I don't think they had a little, a lot of faith in you guys the last time, but I have faith, okay? So I am going to be short and to the point on this. This amended updated request appears to continue to rest solely on the future land use plan adopted in nineteen eighty-nine, which is a compilation of suggested maximum zoning designations. Please take into consideration, this plan is now over thirty years old. And when this plan was actually adopted, nothing was really around that area. It also appears to not have taken into consideration several relevant portions of the applicable Manatee County land development codes. Section four oh two point two of the code requires that any redevelopment plans needs to be consistent with the existing neighborhood. Additionally, it explicitly directs that building density intensity, four oh two point two B, and building height, four oh two point two point C, consider the surrounding development. Currently, there are seven residential properties contiguous to the properties under consideration for rezoning, five single-family, two multifamily. The average dwelling density for these properties is five point two units per acre, less than one-third of the proposed rezoning density of sixteen units per acre. While development is possible, we would respectfully request you not approve the density of sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to come speak on this application? Anyone at all? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing. We'll open it up to questions to the applicant.
Seemed vaguely familiar to before lunch. And yet, I don't feel the same way, I'm not sure why. I know that area out there really well and I, I see it as in what has been described, you know, by U L I and everybody else as an infilling area that we should maximize and, you know, Lake Flores is a part of that. I'm really kind of conflicted. Again, I have the same kind of feeling, I feel like they have these rights. I feel like there was some expectation that they had these rights. And yet, it seems like, you know, because it's not just four stories, it's now it's five because of the deck. I mean, I don't know what you call those dimensions or anything else, but five is five to me, I don't know. I went to USF, I always fess up. So I, when you get up five stories, you're up there. It says fifty, you know, fifty-seven feet or whatever.
Do you have a question for staff or for?
Well, I just, I'm wondering, am I missing something? Is there something intellectually I'm not asking?
So, question for the applicant.
Yeah.
Is Paul missing something?
It's called missing something. And again, Marty Black for the record, and to save staff having to try to dialogue a little bit with you. The reason we went with the four stories of residential is you have existing four-story residents between us and the sunset, if you will, to the bay. So that gives an opportunity for the redevelopment to look over the structures that have already been built closer to the water. So that was the design aspect of it. We believe effectively reduced the development potential by over a third as far as the bulk of the structures and trying to address the concerns of the residents. We are going to have more open space on this property than exists today. There is more coverage on this site than there will be in the redevelopment. So there will be more green space. If any of these structures go up above the three stories, they're gonna have to come in. But we're gonna, we're capping it at those numbers of stories. So you're still gonna have, I'll call them corridors, review corridors, to where those existing structures exist. The malt, the single-family that's on the bay is zoned in a district that frankly is inconsistent with your current comprehensive plan. I don't have a great explanation for that. I mean, nineteen eighty-nine is a long time ago, yes, I was a practicing planner back then, so I can't guess as to what it is. But I think it goes to the point of, and you guys see this a lot and we watch you and see you, this is effectively an infill of an area that has existing transportation capacity, existing utility capacity. And we're going to treat and capture stormwater that today is not being captured and going into the bay. So we believe your overall policy is to encourage redevelopment of this site. But we tried to be a better neighbor by reducing the mass of the structure to a point that we thought would still be economically feasible.
And you did help me, thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, we'll move on to, we'll close the questioning, go on to closing comments and then considerations, so.
Do you not want to have staff closing comments and applicant closing comments?
Yeah, if there's no other questions, but.
I thought it was just a questioning, now I'm waiting for their.
I'm sorry, what are you, what are you asking?
You told me not to ask a question earlier, so now I'm waiting for his rebuttal.
Well.
So I can discuss with him.
What I'm asking is, are there any questions from the commission?
Let's hear his closing statement.
Staff closing comments first. Okay, no comments. Marty, Mr. Black, if you would.
Again, for the record, Marty Black, and just to address the public's comment about the section four point oh two and the aspect of compatibility. That's part of the reason we came back and said, let's cut the maximum potential height. You know, you, there has to be a reasonable use of the property. There's been an expectation for several decades that this property would be eligible for a district to implement in the R E S sixteen. I think density in this case becomes less of an issue because we can only fit so many structures or so many units within it. It's gonna be the size of the structures. We did the traffic analysis based on the full number of units that could be there. It's a de minimis impact, utility capacity is there. From a compatibility perspective, we think by reducing the potential development by a third goes as far as we can go and still have an economic redevelopment of this property.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna close the public.
Yes, now we can get to a point where we can talk, because I didn't.
No, I'm saying.
Big timing.
After rebuttal, no questions. So is it a question for the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because now you wouldn't.
No, nothing after rebuttal. Mr. Black, if you would, come up.
Happy to.
Just did rebuttal.
No, I know.
Well, suffering after lunch.
You want to ask a question and he's gonna get an opportunity to rebut whatever comes out of it. So Mr. Black, Mr. Bedford, what's your question?
I don't have a question. I'm gonna have a statement.
All right.
You let me have one, but right now, I don't have a question.
Is that a, is that in deliberation? Is that, is that a, is that a deliberation? All right, we'll do that in deliberation. Thank you, sir. All right, close the public hearing and deliberation. Mr. Bedford, would you, would you like to kick it off?
Yeah, this is a battle because it's infill, and it's where we want to develop, but it's, it's a battle within the county between by right zoning and PDR. And historically, we've always leaned towards doing PDR in these areas because I want to see the site plan, I want to see the building, I want to see setbacks, I want to see elevations, I want to see all those things, because you're playing it into an existing infrastructure. It's not a green, a green, green site. The county, over the past decade or so, rightly so, has been trying to go towards more by right zoning to streamline some of these things where we go to a straight rezone. If you meet the setbacks, if you meet the buffers, if you meet all that kind of stuff, you get to build your by right zoning. This is a place where I would, you know, kind of like the elevations, I made a comment on early this morning, when you're plugging into existing infrastructure, I'd like to see what a kind, I'd like to see the site plan. And we don't get to see the site plan here. I'm sure it's compatible, I'm sure it's the right place, I'm sure it's putting density downtown where you're supposed to put density, stopping urban sprawl, all, all those kind of things. But I'm a little unhappy that I don't get to see a site plan and know where all that stuff's going to go. So, it wasn't a question, it was just a discussion.
No, and, um, one of the things that I think might be different on this, at least in my view, is that the, you know, if you have a DRI or something like that, that kind of is a blanket that ties everybody who's within that, that framework of entitlement to whatever else happens in it. This is in a similar situation. This is parcel by parcel, or parcels that are grouped together. So, I know there was reference to the DRI being established, I'm sorry, not the DRI, the comp plan being established in 1989, but I think we have to acknowledge that the comp plan's a dynamic document that is constantly amended and revised and updated. And it goes back both, you know, back and forth with regard to what's allowed. So, with those things, I, I think the, the framework of what we're looking at again, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is it consistent with the LDC? And I, I agree that the higher elevations or the taller structures are usually more appropriate, it seems like, on the, on the edges. So, I really don't have an issue with this, very similar to Mr. Rutledge's, his statement. This is a little bit different than the previous one, but I, I do understand the concerns and-
Yeah, and I, I think I would like to just kind of follow, but I appreciate what Richard said earlier, is that there are certain spots where we have to densify. If we're going to have more people come in, and we're not just going to plow everything over, we've got to put density in other places. And I, I think this area out there, the ULI has said that's where we should intensify our, our development. And these are people that I generally think are smarter than I am, which is not limited, but these guys. And, and what I've seen happen at IMG, and what we see happen with the apartments, it's kind of a right spot, closer to the water, it's a great place to live, and it's not all out east where we're plowing over stuff. So, I'm going to, I'm going to be more inclined to kind of follow kind of the commissioner's thoughts earlier, that we set out certain areas, we know we're going to do it, it's going to disappoint people, and they can say we're not doing our job very well, and I'm not very smart. I hear that every day. So, but, but I do think that we do have to build intensity in serviceable areas, because this stuff going out to the undeveloped area to the right and just keep going out to, you know, I, I think that's a mistake. I think we want to be homogenized and be a community that can connect. Height is always the way you solve that. So, I'm going to, I hope not disappoint you too much, but I think I'm going to be in favor of it.
Right. Any other discussions or deliberation? If not, I think the appropriate to consider a motion, Ms. Keva, a motion to approve second by Mr. Smock. If we could, let's go ahead and take a vote. Mr. DeLezline, is your machine working?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. DeLezline, are you working?
All right. With that, motion passes 6-0. So, we're going to move on to the next item, item number 10.
Sure.
And, and just for the record, Ms. Keva's exiting the hearing, so we're down to five members, so.
Application.
I was forewarned about it.
Commissioner, we're going to open together item number 10 and item number 11.
I'm sorry.
We're going to open together both.
Together, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't turn my page. Thank you.
Item number 10, PA 2216, ordinance 2372, formerly known as 22105, La Cee Ranch Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Map and Text Amendment. And it's a legislative case, and the case manager is Mr. Viloche. It's a transmitter of an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County regarding comprehensive planning, amending the Manatee County Ordinance Number 8901, provided for a privately initiated large scale amendment to the future land use map of the future land use element to designate 404.93 acres of specific property generally located northeast of the intersection of Rutland Road, County Road 675, and Rye Road North Parish from the Ag. Rural Agriculture Rural Future Land Use Classification to the UF3 Urban Fringe, three dwelling units per acre Future Land Use Classification, providing for a specific property development condition in the text of the comprehensive plan to limit the maximum density potential, 495.45 total acres and 404.93.93 acres, subject to the future land use change to 2.23 dwelling units per acre, for a total of 1,100 units inclusive of any density bonus, and to limit development of the property to residential use only, to be developed in accordance with Policy 2.1.2.8 of the comprehensive plan as a component of a large project located west of the future development area boundary.
Thank you very much.
And the item number 11, that is-
Only 10?
Yes.
Whoa, big fella.
That is the GDP associated with that is PDR 2226, ZG, La Cee Ranch, La Cee Ranch Holding, LOP. And it's a quasi judicial case, and the case manager is Mr. Marshall Robinson. And it's an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, regarding land development, amending the zoning, the official zoning atlas ordinance 1517 related to the zoning within the unincorporated area, provided for a rezone of more or less 495.45 acres from A General Agriculture to the PDR Plan Development Residential Zoning District, to be developed in accordance with Policy 2.1.2.8 of the comprehensive plan as a component of a large project located west of the future development area boundary. And the site is located along the north sides of the County Road 675 and north of Rye Road and County Road 675 intersection Parish, approving a general development plan, large project for 1,100 residential units, single-family detached and single-family attached.
Thank you. And with that, have there been any ex parte communications regarding item number 11, PDR 22-26, per NZ, per NG?
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing none. Good afternoon, Mr. Grimes. If you could, please introduce your application.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, Kyle Grimes, attorney with the law firm of Grimes-Galvano here in Manatee County, have been sworn. That was a lot, so I'm going to try and kind of bring it down into what, what we're here for today. We are here on an application for a comprehensive plan amendment and a proposed rezone with a general development plan. And I'm sure a lot of you recognize this project. It was before this commission not too long ago. And I wanted to take a chance to kind of walk through why we're back here before this, this commission, before I have Mr. Spazato kind of walk through and give a recap of this After we received a positive recommendation from this commission of these two applications, we went to the board on the transmittal hearing for the comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendment only. And at that time, the, the board chose not to transmit the comprehensive plan amendment, and it really came down to three primary items as to why it was not transmitted. And I want to kind of walk through those and explain what those are and the changes we have made to our applications to address them. The first item really came down to process. At that time, we were instructed that it was, you know, you bring just the comprehensive plan amendment at the transmittal hearing, then the rezone and comp plan would come together at the adoption hearing. And one of the, the concerns of the board with, with this application, which is under this 212A policy, is that they'd really like to get a full picture of what the project will ultimately look like before making any determinations on the comp plan amendment aspect of the application. And, and we completely understand and appreciate that. And so, we worked with your county attorney, and what we're doing now is we're going to go ahead and public notice for both applications at that transmittal hearing, so we can get into both of them, walk through like we do before this commission, the comp plan amendment, get into the, the nitty-gritty of the, the rezone and the site plan before they make any decision to, to transmit the comprehensive plan amendment. There will be no action taken on the rezone at that first hearing, but then they'd all come back at the, at the same time. So, that is something we have done and, and provided that notice for that. The second was with regards to the comp plan amendment itself. And when you do this comp plan amendment change to a UF3, you know, for the foreseeable future of the project, you can really go into whatever under that maximum of that UF3. And out in this area, one of the concerns is that, you know, we may want 1,100 units now, but if somebody comes in later, wants to take advantage of density bonuses or, you know, bonuses at an activity note and things, wanted a level of assurance that what we're proposing is what's going to be there for the project. So, to address that, we have added a text amendment aspect to the comp plan to provide what we call the D5 limitation. And that's where we say, hey, you know, it's written in the comp plan, this property cannot receive any density over and above the 1,100 units that we're proposing, and there is no non-residential for the life of it. So, there's nothing that can change from the maximum of 1,100 units without coming back and going through the full comprehensive plan amendment policy. So, that solidifies in your comprehensive plan that this is, this is the maximum density, that's what it's going to be for this project. And, and that was a big part of why we're, we're coming back here before this board is, is adding that text amendment. The third item had to do with, we received, the, the board prior to the last hearing received a letter from an adjacent developer, the, the Rye Ranch, with, with some concerns over how things would be handled with regards to construction, primarily of the, the force main that is located along 675 that this project will ultimately tie into. That developer does have an LDA obligating the construction of that. So, it, it was really just a worry of how's this going to work and not wanting to have these conflicting viewpoints on this. So, since that hearing, we, we sat down with that developer, with their attorney, Mr. Rudicil, who I see here is in the, in the back of the room, and, and kind of talked through each project and how, you know, we can move forward where both benefit, you know, and work together on this. And so, that is why you see in your application package, we have added a developer proffered stipulation, basically saying, hey, you know, we're going to let, step back, let the developers of Rye Ranch move forward with the construction of that line as spelled out in their LDA. We're not going to step on their toes on it, let them go through and build it. There's kind of a sunset provision built in there, because, you know, you never know if some, something happens in the future, you know, down the line, if no work's done, we may be able to step in. But we have full faith that they will continue to work forward and, and get that done. And we're going to continue to have open communication with them as, as we move forward on that, and can, and as well as the extension of Rye Road through this site. So, we, we were able to work through and work with them, and that's why you see that added stipulation in the zoning ordinance. So, with that, I'm, I'm going to let Stephen come up and just kind of briefly go through our project and, and give an outline of all the specifics there. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Spazato, Certified Planner with Level Up Consulting. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
And as Kyle mentioned, I, we'll give a refresher, we'll give the full presentation. Our team is here, if you have any additional questions, or if we can provide any, any additional assistance in responding. The, the 495-acre site is located near the intersection of County Road 675, where Rutland Road and Rye Road. It's sandwiched between two planned developments, including the Aviary and Foxbrook. As you can see on the, the exhibit, there are other large planned communities nearby. The, the first of the two requests is, is regarding the comprehensive plan, and there, as Kyle mentioned, we're proposing both a, a map and a text amendment. The property is currently bisected by two designations, UF3 and AGR. So, the goal is to unify the property under the UF3 designation, consistent with Policy 2.1.2.8. The text amendment has been added to ensure that the comp plan intensity and use match, pretty much matches what we're proposing with the rezone. So, instead of a base maximum of three units to the acre, the allowable, the allowable is 2.23. And again, there's no opportunity for additional density or a change of use from residential unless the plan is amended. Specifically regarding Policy 2.1.2.8, our project conforms with it, and that policy does allow for suburban-type development east of the F dab boundary. As you can see on the exhibit, the, the boundary is the, the pink line, and you can see just to the south of our site, I'm sorry, just, yeah, it jogs to the west, just to the south of our site, and it splits our property rather than following our, our property line. There is substantial evidence that showing consistency with Policy 2.1.2.8. I'd be happy to review those if, if, if requested. The companion request is a, is a rezone to Plan Development Residential with a GDP. There are no material changes proposed, except for what Kyle mentioned regarding the, was, what's proffered regarding, regarding sewer. In terms of the GDP, I would highlight that we are accommodating the right-of-way for the Rye Road extension, which runs kind of north-south through the property, and future, what's called Future Road BB, which is sort of in the northern third of our property, and that, that road runs east-west. The individual neighborhoods are served by an internal spine road that connects to, to Rye Road Extension as well as Rutland Road. And you, significant emphasis on the design of the plan is the preservation of contiguous, large contiguous open space areas, and nearly 50% of the site is open space, which is substantially more than, than is required. A little bit more detail on access, kind of zooming in a little bit. Our primary and secondary, which is for emergency only, is along Rutland Road. The project will construct two of the four-lane section of the Rye Road extension, and the future Rye Road intersection with Rutland is actually off-site. It's at the existing Howling Wolf Run, which is at the entrance to the Foxbrook community, and our team has been working with the county on the alignment of that, of that intersection. These are examples of both homes and amenities that Polty, Polty, sorry, is currently developing in the area and is contemplating for, for La Cee Sea as well. I mentioned the significance of, of open space with the project. There are 25 acres of upland that's, that are being preserved along the Frye Canal, not only that serving as a, as a nice or as a significant ecological wildlife quarter, but also provides a, a substantial buffer between our site and, and Foxbrook. The blue and the, and kind of the green on, on the different exhibits is what we're preserving adjacent to the Gable Creek, and that's approximately 50 acres. The project includes two specific, two specific, sorry, approvals. First is something you see regularly, and that is to reduce the secondary front yard setback to 15 feet when it functions as a side yard. The second specific approval has to do with our second access, which is, which allows for it to be- be emergency and temporary. And there's a couple of conditions regarding that. One is it'll be removed when Ry Road Extension is constructed from Rutland Road. It will be improved to be resident-only and emergency access prior to the certificate of occupancy, or CO, for the 531st home, if Ry Road Extension has not been constructed. We had a neighborhood workshop. I know there's a comment letter in your packet, and both the questions and feedback are similar. And in response to that, we have capped density via the text amendment. There's 25 acres of preservation, as I mentioned, adjacent to the Fry Canal, which results in approximate 300-plus offset from the back of lots to the common boundary with Foxbrook. Street lighting will be designed consistent with the county standards. And as I already mentioned, our team is working with the county on that intersection of what will be Ry Road, Howling Wolf Run, and Rutland. And so, substantial amount of efforts ongoing to address that, and that will also be more formalized within an LDA. So, in conclusion, we have a positive staff recommendation. I think we've substantially demonstrated that the project has been thoughtfully and comprehensively planned to ensure consistency with the comp plan and compatible with adjacent development. And again, our team is here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Hearing none. We'll go to staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioners, for the record, I'm Bill O'Shea with Development Services. I will be presenting the comprehensive plan amendment for you today. And then, we'll be turning over the presentation to Mr. Marshall Robinson, who will talk about the rezone and the GDP. And in case I get pulled into the conversation on the GDP, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
The applicant did a really good job of summarizing the application and the changes, since it was before you, the first time. I'm just going to go over a couple additional points and then turn it over to Marshall. So, with this request, with the text amendment, without the text amendment or D5 provision, this site does meet commercial locational criteria, I'm sorry, is at a node. So, it does not need to meet commercial locational criteria. It could get 300 square feet of neighborhood commercial and 4,459 dwelling units with a bonus for being at a node. If it was an affordable housing project, it could have 4,459 dwelling units, or it could be totally commercial at 300,000 square feet. And as Mr. Grimes had indicated, with this D5 provision, there are no non-residential entitlements that are allowed on the site, and the cap is 1,100 units, which is substantially different than the 4,495 they could have had approved at this location. Couple other things is the schools that will serve this site is Williams Elementary, Buffalo Creek Middle, and Parish Community High. There is no public transportation available out to this site. It cuts off around the post office on US 301 in Allington. And nearby parks are Ry Preserve, Lake Manti State Park, Hidden Harbor Park, that are located between three and eight miles of the site. Oh, I just wanted to point out to you the existing utilities. As you can see, there are utilities along 675 that go into the adjacent subdivisions, both on the east and the west side. So, this is a logical transition, given the emerging development trends in the area. It is more or less, although it's not in an urban environment, an infill project, and only a portion, or 90-plus or minus acres, is currently classified as UF3, which already permits the three dwelling units per acre. The negative aspect is there is approximately 405 acres east of the F dab. However, the applicant must demonstrate compliance with Policy 2-1-2-8 as the site is developed. And of course, as this project moves forward, any other applicable land development code regulations will need to be complied with. So, the conclusion by staff is the request can be found to be consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the comp plan, and the request is for transmittal of PA 22-16. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. O'Shea? Okay, thank you.
Next up is Marshall on the GDP and rezone.
Very good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Marshall Robinson. I'm a staff planner, and I have been sworn. We're going to buzz through this presentation a little bit. A lot of the information you're going to see has been repeated previously. I don't think this is my presentation. It's not. That's familiar. Yes, that's it. That's not. That's it. Okay. So, there's the two specific approvals that Mr. Spazo spoke about. The first one is common to most of these residential plan developments, dealing with the secondary front yard, and then also the second means of access, specific approval in transportation planning and traffic operations. They didn't report any objections to the second means of access request for specific approval. This map here gives a pretty good indication of the development pattern and what's going around it. And hopefully, from this map, or maybe the previous map, it essentially is an extension of the UF3 future land use category. Here we go. So, the green and the AGR, and the orange is the UF3. And obviously, the first application for the plan amendment would be able to expand the UF3 to encapsulate all the green inside the blue boundary there, making the whole 495 acres subject to the UF3 future land use policy, which carries a base density of three units per acre. And something to piggyback what was said previously with density bonuses and affordable housing of how much development potential there is on this property, given the fact that it's located within an activity node. But it also is important to note that even at the base density of three units per acre, that would yield 1,486 units on 495 gross acres. And the applicant is coming in well below that with 1,100 single-family attached and single-family detached residential units. Some of the surrounding development in the area, we have Foxbrook, we have Ry Ranch, and we have Twin Rivers. All of these projects exceed at least 400 acres, and all of these projects range anywhere between two and three units per acre. So, we're consistent on the request for the density as it relates to the number of units. The development standards likewise are very consistent with those projects that I just mentioned in the surrounding area. We've got 40-foot minimum lot widths for the single-family detached, and we have 20-foot minimum lot widths for the single-family attached. The setbacks, the building height, two stories for both products, very consistent with everything that's out in the area. And then, the open space. The open space, the minimum requirement here in this location is 35%, and the applicant has offered up 47%, which translates into 234 acres of open space provided within the general development plan. We've got buffers. And, yeah, so the property is buffered at the perimeter with 15-foot green belt buffers. We've also got buffers provided along the roadway, 20-foot buffers along the Future Collector Road, Ry Road, and County Road 675. There are about 67 acres of wetlands on site, and we've got about 15.39 acres of wetland impacts, or potential wetland impacts. There's an amenity center located on site within the planned development. And let's see, what else is here for the Planning Commission to... I think most of the information has been covered. Staff, you know, we didn't have any objections in the review. Everything seems to have been worked out with the transmittal to the state, the D5 provision that was implemented for the plan amendment, and then likewise, the stipulation that's been added to the staff report for the rezone. Staff has no concerns, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has one.
What is the Phase 1, Phase 2? Is that just for development?
It's a two-phase, yeah, they're going to phase the project. Commissioner Connerly, I think that's in the staff report. I think it's like 570 units in the first phase. But it's a two-phase.
Okay, that's nothing related to the entitlements. It's just a...
No.
Okay, all right.
Just for when later on they come in, they might break it up.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for staff?
I just had a question whether the wildlife environmental study showed anything of interest out there. You start to get out in that area. It's pretty well-trafficked with...
I don't know that there was anything reported, but I'd be happy to have our environmentalists come up and speak to you.
Be happy to.
Sure. Care is great. There you go.
Kara Canig, Environmental Planning Section Manager, and I have been sworn. Per the environmental report provided from the applicant's environmental consultant, there were seven potentially active gopher tortoise burrows, primarily located along Fry Canal. But with any development project, when it gets to final site plan and construction plans, within 90 days of construction, they need to provide 100% gopher tortoise survey, and that needs to be done in accordance with FWC standards.
No eagles' nests out there that you've found?
Not within 660 feet.
Okay. All right, cool.
One follow-up question? Okay. One of the sheets in the environmental report indicated Florida Grasshopper Sparrow and Scrub J consultation areas. What does that mean, consultation area? Does it require a study?
That'll be looked into further time for the site plan. Like I said, we really rely on the environmental consultants, and I don't know if they do have anyone here for it. But they have to work with the appropriate agency, so Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, and then US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Okay, that's okay. I was just wondering, it looks like every place out in East Manatee County is the same. So, I was just wondering what the process was. So, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bedford, Kara. Did you need...
Yeah.
Just stay up there.
CRAS will be done as part of an FSP, do you think? Or, we don't know yet. Cultural Resource?
I believe it has been done, since this is a large project, isn't it? Mm-hmm. And it was as part of the application.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions for staff?
Karen, you?
Go ahead.
Were there any bears?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. That's always the answer. All right. With that, if there are no additional, Marshall, do you have additional?
Just wanted to let Commissioner Bedford know that we had the Cultural Resource Assessment Survey Letter as an attachment to the staff report.
Thank you.
Very good. So, if there are no other questions for staff or the applicant, we're going to open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to either of these applications? Anyone at all? All right, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing and open it up for dialogue, questions, anything additional needed for...
Can I just ask one question? Was there any commentary about the eastern development line and how this sits on it, and whether the commission had any concerns about that? Is that...
Kyle Grimes, again, for the record. A lot of that was kind of built into this issue that we've tried to address with that D5 limitation. I think that was the biggest concern, is because we're getting out in this area, we don't want this uncertainty looming out there that somebody could come in down the future. And under the comp plan...
Double down on it.
Double down on it. And so, that's why we're trying to address it in this way.
Okay. So, that's part of the consideration, is you know you're getting kind of out there, there's no services, and there's a lot of land out there, but you're going to manage that by limiting.
That's exactly right, which is right in line with what our client's been planning this whole time. So, it was a no-brainer to go ahead and add that limitation.
Does Polte own any of the property around this?
No, they're just contract purchasers of this property of a farmer that's owned it for many, many years. There is a development that's still continuing, the aviary just to our west, that has some additional phases going up that ultimately will probably carry the further extension of Ry Road. So, we'll be continuing to work with them with...
Same thing with sewer and water and all those things. You guys are going to be connected because you're crossing out there.
Absolutely, yep. And that's that build-out force main that I was discussing earlier that the Ry Ranch is doing. So, we'll continue to work with them, with county staff, not just on the extension of utilities, but also that extension of Ry Road. And from my understanding, we're really coming close to getting some concept designs of how that's going to tie into 675. So, I foresee us bringing that forward in an LDA of how we're going to address that connection.
Thanks.
So, you mentioned an LDA. So, the intent is to execute an LDA?
Yes, it is a requirement of 2-1-2-8. And so, we will be bringing that forward, and, you know, this is a large project as well. So, we will be doing an LDA that will follow this zoning and comp plan process. We'll work with your staff on that, and that'll come back to the board.
Is the intent that the LDA address anything related to the force main that's being extended?
Yeah, so, it will discuss that force main extension. It has to identify, you know, our requirements under 2-1-2-8, which are the extension of utilities, as well as the extension of the thoroughfares through the site. So, we will address those. It'll be a little unique in how we address it, because it's something that is being constructed by another developer. But we're continuously working with them and with the county to make sure it is addressed appropriately.
Is the neighboring development, is the LDA, is their LDA require they upsize it to serve?
And that's the, they have a requirement to build it in conformity to the comp plan. But what we've been working with your staff at Public Works with Scott May on the appropriate sizing of that pipe, and then we'll work with a contribution to that in our LDA.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Again, anything further for staff or the applicant? Any dialogue before we go to staff closing comments or closing comments rebuttal? Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to go to staff closing comments. Mr. O'Shea, do you have anything related to the comp plan amendment?
No, Mr. Chairman, nothing further on the comprehensive plan amendment.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
No, sir, nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mr. Grimes, your closing comments?
Nothing significant. Just appreciate the opportunity to come back, and, you know, we have put a lot of work in since that last board hearing on making sure we're addressing all those issues. So, with that, I appreciate your positive recommendation.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, dialogue, or consideration of a motion. And we have two items, so item number 10 is going to be the first consideration.
Well, I'd just like to say, too, I think the negative aspect of this is everybody's concerned about how far east do we push and what do we put out there. But when I look at the mitigating factors, the things that they're doing, and the capital they're going to spend to kind of stretch us out there, I think it gives them the same, my same sense as Lakewood Ranch. They do well, they do it successfully, and do it to address future growth. I think that's the best we can do. So, I'm going to be supportive of it.
Thank you. Also, I think anytime there's an opportunity to master plan is a good opportunity. So, all right, with that, we have a motion by Mr. DeLezline, a second by Mr. Smock. If you would, please vote. The suspense is killing me. Do I need to call a voice vote? All right, there we go. The motion passes 5-0 with Mr. Roth and Ms. Keva absent.
It says zero, they leave themselves, didn't they?
No. I don't think so. Oh, when you said a conflict, I thought you meant a conflict with the participating. She would, no, she had to leave. She had a scheduling.
Oh, I thought she had a conflict with the project.
No, 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 no. She's retired.
She's retired. Sorry.
No, sorry. All right, with that, we're going to go to item number 11. Again, item number 10 passes 5-0. Item number 11, Chair will consider a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Smock. We have a second by Mr. DeLezline. If you would, please vote. All right, with that, motion passes 5-0. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item number 12, the last item.
Item number 12, PDI, 2312 CG Titan Florida Resort Tarmac America LLC, and is a quasi judicial, and the case manager is Mr. and the case manager is Mr. Marshall Robinson, and is a rezone of more or less 4.59 acres, generally located half-mile north of Whitfield Avenue, along the west side of 33rd Street East, west of Prospect Road, and commonly known 6520, 33rd Street East Sarasota, from LM/IA Light Manufacturing Airport Impact Overlay District to the PDI Plan Development Industrial Stunning District retaining the IA Airport Overlay District, approving a general development plan for an asphalt/concrete processing, manufacturing, or recycling plant heavy industrial.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Bibler, how are you?
Good afternoon. Jake Bibler with ZNS Engineering, Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
And I'm here to present the Titan rezone.
Can you give me one moment, please? Have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
No? Alright, apologize, go ahead, please.
Thank you, no problem. Our team is a bit limited this afternoon. We have Shelby Olson is the environmental director for Titan America, and she's here in case there are questions about the specific site. Mr. John Patterson, our attorney, became ill this afternoon and had to go home, so I'm here representing ZNS Engineering, and Mr. Yates is still in the room, so.
Elvis?
Just quickly, this is a rezone. We're requesting a rezone to PDI with a general development plan. The current future land use category is a heavy industrial, and PDI is an implementing zoning district for that future land use category. The current zoning is light manufacturing. The overlay districts here are the southwest TIF and the airport height restriction. We're proposing a ready-mix concrete plant as the use for the site. So, the general location is located on 33rd Street East, that's east of US 301 and south of 63rd. Here's a quick look at some of the surrounding industrial development. I'll point these out a little more on the map if you'd like to see those, but as you can see, it's a pretty industrious area. The future land use, as I suggested earlier, was, is the industrial-heavy future land use category. That covers our current site and all of the immediate surrounding area. Further to the north and to the east are industrial-light future land use categories, and then further to the east is residential 6. Current zoning is light manufacturing. We have heavy manufacturing surrounding to the north and to the west, light manufacturing further to the north and to the east, and further to the south. And then immediately to the south is a, an outlier A1 zoning district with a single-family residence. The reason we're coming in with a general development plan is because of that single-family residence. We are proposing up to six-story concrete ready-mix silos, and the general development plan shows those on the northernmost portion of the property, to set those back as far as possible from that residential use. The project area is 4.59 acres, with an open space proposed of 1.15 acres. There are no wetlands, but there is a pond there on the southwest corner. There will be one-story material storage bins on the southern portion of that site. This is a look at what the Titan silos at the Naples Plant looks like. This is a view from the road, and you can see, these are a little bit higher than what Titan is proposing for this specific site. And while we're requesting six stories and 80 feet in height, their proposed plan is to come in at a bit smaller unit than that, and Shelby can give some specifics if you'd like. Just to summarize, we're requesting a rezone from light manufacturing to plan development industrial with a general development plan. We find that this application is consistent with the comprehensive plan and land development code, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Just one general question. Typically, where's the silo, the tower, fall within the property, the project boundaries?
Sure, I'm just gonna, I'll back up here to the general development plan, and you can see, if you can read it, those arrows that are on the top part of that GDP, it's on the northern property line. They'll, of course, be setback to meet standards, setback standards, but...
So, somewhere within that square, or?
Exactly, yes.
Alright.
That general area, yes.
The arrows square, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're having that discussion...
Yes, sir.
In the staff report, item number 2 calls out for a general development plan, which looks to me like a survey. I was expecting to see this drawing on our agenda. So, for the board meeting, you might want to actually put the GDP where you say GDP.
What's the error when we do the addition of the agenda? For this reason, we passed early the GDP. Instead to put the GDP, we placed the survey, was a mistake.
I believe that Mr. Robinson may have that to pass out.
He passed it out this morning.
Well, I understand, but it's not the GDP.
They were saying the survey ended up under the heading GDP, but this was handed out.
So, you might want to correct this for the board meeting, because this is wrong.
But that's why she handed, they handed it out.
This is mea culpa.
They knew it was wrong.
There's no changes, it's just...
Can I ask one other question?
Yes.
About how many people would be employed here?
I'll leave that to Shelby to answer.
Shelby?
She was hoping not to have to get up.
Let's wait, have you been sworn?
Yes, I'm Shelby Olson with Titan America. I have been sworn in and am a resident of Broward County. We are anticipating roughly 10 employees with truck drivers, quality technicians, and supervisor at the plant, anywhere, and if you're curious, in salary range, anywhere from $50,000 to $90,000.
This is good.
We think so.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant?
Alright.
Thank you very much. That will go to staff presentation.
Good afternoon, my name is Marshall Robinson, I'm a staff planner, and I have been sworn. And Mr. Bibler went over most of the information I have, I think that's the last PowerPoint, Yeah, it's in the slideshow, it's footer. Oh, it's not there. Well, just, can you put Jake's slideshow back up there? Mine should be in there.
Is that what all your presentations are called?
It is organized chaos, Chairman O'Connell. Sorry about that.
Even if that's true, you don't tell anybody.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so, we all know where it is, 33rd Street, south of 63rd, north of Whitfield. It's at the southwest tax incremental financing district. You can see here is a pretty good look at the future land use map. We are in the industrial-heavy, the plan development industrial PD with site plan implements the industrial-heavy future land use category for this heavy industrial use. It is part of the permitted uses on the property. The other thing I wanted to show you, this, the PDI does allow for asphalt, concrete, processing, manufacturing, and recycling plants. I would like to get on the record and say that we didn't get too far in the weeds on restrictions or limitations for this type of use, which is a very, very intense use. But given the nature of the four-and-a-half acres, we were pretty satisfied that we didn't have to rake them over the coast too much with a lot of concerns about heights, scale, and bulk, even though the applicant was able to offer up on the site plan an extended setback along their south boundary, because we do have the ag property there with the legally non-conforming residential house there. So, they were sensitive to that. And on the site plan, we call out that house just to the south. Hopefully, that gives you a decent perspective of how this is situated, because it really is a telling part of the county when you look at the map, because, you know, you have all of this industrial and light industrial off to the west, and then as you meander toward the east, it just slams right into residential land use. There's not really much of a transition to get you from that heavy industrial over to where that residential land use is. Luckily, though, they have 33rd Street there that kind of acts as a divider between the residential and the industrial land uses. And it does step down from the heavy, once you jump 33rd Street, there is a little swath of light industrial there that contains a lot of light industrial, light manufacturing. And so, that might be considered somewhat of a transition before you get to the neighborhood. And just if you're curious, we did measure what we're looking at from this site to the nearest rooftop in that residential district, and we're looking at about 600 feet. I would want to point out that this is a heavy industrial use, and we do have a stipulation in the zoning ordinance or in the staff report that requires the applicant to comply with Section 540 of the Land Development Code. Section 540 just talks about how all projects are not to create any adverse impacts. Those could be any things from emission, light, air, dust, noise, but because it's heavy, it would not be subject to any kind of adverse impact review, unless, of course, it came under some sort of alleged violation or code enforcement action, and then you could get into having to study the site for any adverse impacts. But because of its heavy industrial use nature, it's not subject to that. The height, that's where the 70 feet, or the height, I wanted to get back to the site plan and say one thing about this here, even though it's kind of looked at as like a box, and there's not a great deal of detail on the plan, I would like to say that we're gonna be looking for those silos to generally stay up there in that northern portion of the site plan. If they came in at FSP and they had one of those 80-foot silos sitting on the south boundary, where we tried to protect that house with a 70-foot setback, that'd be an issue, and we'd have to clean that up. So, the way it is now, we're looking for the silos to be to the north, and the one-story storage bins to be along the south. And here's the development standards they gave us for the site, and this is in your staff report. It's a little too small for me to read from down here. And then we have the positive, the negative, and the mitigating measures. And Commissioner Rutledge, you're right, it probably could have went down as a positive aspect, but, you know, a use like this means jobs, and we're happy to see that as well, so. But that's all I have for the planning commission, if anybody has any questions or concerns.
I had two questions. One is, do you have any idea how many trucks will be going in and out of here on a daily basis? I mean, it's obviously business volumes, but is there some average number, 10 trucks a day?
I bet Mr. Robinson doesn't, but I bet Mr. Yates does.
Well, let me say, my next question, which is, what kind of taxation is there on trucks that are gonna be heavy use on our roadways?
Well, that's a great question, Commissioner. I wouldn't know how to begin to, yeah, just, I don't know, back home where I'm from, they go off the gross vehicle weight.
Okay.
But I'm not really sure.
Not in the free state of Florida.
How socialist of me, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's pretty free up there.
Every time they fill up, they're paying the...
Yeah.
So, any other questions for staff? If not, maybe Mr. Yates, if you could. Mr. Yates, I have a question for you. You've sat here all day, and Tuesday, I saw you all day at Sarasota County Planning, or Board of County Commission. When do you actually work?
And if you want to go to the city of Tampa tonight, that's where I'll be tonight. Michael Yates with Palm Traffic, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
So, from the daily trips on the roadway, it would be estimated at about 60 daily trips on the roadway that are trucks, is what they anticipate. It's 44 total PM peak hour based on ITE for manufacturing, but they estimate it would be about 60 trucks per day on the roadway.
And they'll park there at the site?
They will park at the site, but a lot of them will come in and go.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be served by company trucks, but also?
Benders.
Bender trucks, yeah.
Benders, okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? Anything at all? Okay, alright, with that, we're gonna go to public comment, so if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application, please do so. Alright, seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we'll go back to the commissioners. Is there anything additional needed from staff or from the applicant before we go to closing comments?
Yes, sir.
Alright, hearing nothing, we're gonna go to staff closing comments?
Nothing further, sir, thank you.
Alright, applicant, applicant's waving closing comments, so we're gonna close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, debate. Well, we have a motion by Mr. Bedford, and a second by Mr. DeLezline. If you would, please go ahead and vote. And while we're voting, I would like to say it's nice to see industrial property being used for an industrial use, and not somebody coming in with a multifamily application or a car wash, so. Alright, with that, motion passes 5-0, again with Mr. Roth and Ms. Kiba absent. So, that concludes our agenda for applications. Citizen comments, I don't think we have any additional citizens here, so if there is, please step forward. Seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close that, and with that, I think we can be adjourned, so.